Jeff, I'm not sure how to do that. You set it up and invite me and I can be there.
Oh, never mind, Dave. I was just, um, I was voice, voice chatting with, uh, Christabel.
Ooh, I can ignore that.
Check your, uh, check your Ring Central for any messages.
Got it.
Yes. Okay, how about you? We're missing something. Is Maggie coming?
How is it?
It's good.
Oh, we're high.
Four seventy six. Okay. Other questions? So going on.
I hope.
Okay, are we, are we pulled together?
You can have.
We could send some. Ah.
Well, please, man. Okay. Good evening, everybody. Um, like to call the order, the special planning commission meeting of the city of Campbell Thursday, January the twentieth. Uh, Andrea, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Strasky, Commissioner Zisser.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rivlin.
Here.
Commissioner Kamkar.
Here.
Commissioner Clay.
Here.
Vice Chair Buckbinder.
Here.
Chair Qing.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'll move to approval of the minutes, um, from the fourteenth of December. Seems a long time ago. Has everybody had a chance to look at minutes? Any changes, modifications? Do I have a motion for approval, please?
I move approval of the December fourteenth minutes.
Thank you. And second. Thank you. That's Commissioner Kamkar.
Commissioners Zisser.
What's that?
Uh, approval.
Approval of minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Commissioner Rivlin.
Aye.
Commissioner Kamkar.
Aye.
Commissioner Clay.
Aye.
Vice Chair Buckbinder.
Aye.
Chair Qing.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that's approved. Um, moving to communications, um, directories. Would any changes, additions, modifications?
Absolutely. I'd rather use to do development director on the two items, communications, agenda modifications. We did raise a desk item that had some updated maps. Uh, you also see that in the presentation. And I know we had some last minute public comments that Blake Clark pushed out to the commission and that's the only updates I have.
Thank you. Okay, so I've moved to, um, the part of the meeting where we welcome all requests from the public. Uh, members of the public may address the commission on items of concerns in the community that are not listed on the agenda this evening. Uh, people may speak up to five minutes on any matter concerning the commission. So I will put it at this point. Andrea, do we see any online?
I see one online with their hand raised for oral requests.
No requests.
No requests.
Thank you. So I'll close that. Okay, so moving to the first item of business, um, before I read out the item, uh, do we have any disclosures for any of the commissioners? I'm seeing no disclosures.
This is maybe a question for later and the attorney or director can let me know. Something that came up in my mind was where, we all live in Campbell. We all live in proximity of some of these housing sites. Do we, do we need to disclose on each housing site that may be within proximity of our address?
Uh. No, you would, uh, generally not need to do that as you're reviewing this, uh, as a whole item. And, uh, everyone is going to be within, uh, within a proximate distance of, of probably some of these sites.
That's the answer I thought. Thank you.
Good question. Thank you. So I'll read out the first, um, annual order of business for tonight, which is PLN twenty twenty-one dash twelve. Uh, reviewing the prioritized housing opportunity sites and provide a recommendation to the city council. On which sites should be included in Campbell's plan for housing and the city's envision Campbell general plan update. And provide feedback on key principles to guide which housing opportunity sites should be designated for mixed use development. Um, just before, uh, I believe Senior Planner, uh, Rose, um, starts his presentation. Um, a couple of points I'd just like to note. One, um, I think this is about the third meeting we have on the housing element. Um, just like to thank the community, both within Campbell and outside of Campbell for all their feedback and attendance. That has been great on, um, to see on such an important subject and also to the hard work of the, uh, the staff. I think they've done a great job and I know I'm rather short handed at the moment. Hopefully that will change in the future. So thank you. Um, really type of bring a context on this. Uh, I, I think, and this is really maybe a bit of guidance to, um, fellow commissioners and to the questioning, uh, from the community tonight. The objective for, I lose the microphone. Um, the objective really is to review the tier one sites. Um, and make recommendations to the staff and the council to, for which ones to be included in Campbell's plan for housing. So I think we need to get some crisp outcomes, um, so that the staff are clear and can go away with our recommendations on there. So if there's any, you know, anything we'd like to, you know, we should be aiming to get that type of output. The second one is on, um, our comments and, um, and in terms of the principles on which, uh, we'll decide, uh, whether developments are suitable for mixed use development. And I think there's a subtlety on that which I'm sure Stephen will be talking about, whether we land that or whether we have these principles options in the, in the development. So, uh, I, I just encourage us to think about those two objectives and then that'd be a great outcome for, for tonight. And, um, directors would, if you don't think we're getting there, just shout because that'd be a good, a good outcome to have. So, so with that, um, I'll hand over to Stephen.
Uh, it's actually me. Obviously, no, no problem whatsoever. And, uh, you pinned it exactly. Uh, we're hoping those are the two outcomes. Now, we are at a critical juncture after a few months now of, of going through. I've got a funneling process of starting to look at the city and where housing could happen and looking at densities and starting to funnel down the sites that we're actually looking at. So this is a key part of that funneling process of deciding what sites go forward. And, and really critical, critical, we'll talk about it more. Uh, we have to start the environmental review process. So, um, after tonight and the council meeting on Tuesday, which this will go to, there really won't be much of an opportunity to add housing opportunity sites. So, so keep in mind, um, tonight, those, it's better to be more inclusive at this point. You can do environmental studies of something that's bigger and more intensive and more housing and later adopt something that's less. But to not study a site now and then later on add it would cause problems. Uh, so if that helps, uh, frame the objectives we're trying to get through, uh, Commissioner Qing and, uh, um, commission, um, that, uh, this critical point we're at for this evening. Uh, so with that, I'll back up just a little bit. Uh, just introduce, uh, the staff and the consultant team, which you've seen many times. Uh, Stephen Rose with me, Senior Planner. Uh, we do have, uh, online tonight, our consultant team, and that includes David Hogan, who you've seen a couple of times, Jeff Bradley. Um, also Christabel Mendoza and Marion Matthew. Uh, those are four members of the M Group team, but they're attending via Zoom tonight. Uh, the, uh, David will be, uh, participating in the presentation and as you have questions, uh, we might cause Colin, David, uh, Jeff and other members to answer as well. But they'll be here via Zoom. Uh, on the screen, uh, is the intended, uh, presentation for tonight. Uh, to work through some background information to start, uh, how we got to this meeting, some of the property owner feedback, uh, we've received. Uh, the methodology the staff has used to rank these sites and as, uh, Chair Qing mentioned, uh, classify the tier one sites, which will be the most substantial discussion point tonight. Do these sites go forward? Uh, within that, we've called out, uh, three sites that we think caused a different, are made a different discussion. That's the Campbell Technology Park and Two City On Sites. We'll talk a little bit about those. At that, at that point, our recommendation was to stop, allow public comment, uh, commissioner deliberation, feedback. And following that, we'd come back to the mixed use question, um, uh, talk a little bit about building height. That issue came up with the council. Uh, come back for commission discussion and hopefully close up. Uh, so with that, I'll take the first couple of slides and then we'll go through the, the first parts of the presentation. So again, just to frame, uh, I know you've seen the slide many, many times, uh, but we're in January two thousand twenty-two. It is a critical part. Our consultant has told us they really need to start the environmental review process. And again, tonight's decision will dictate, uh, what housing sites go into that E I R process that will start, uh, following next Tuesday's review by the city, uh, city council. Um, so with that, uh, those were actually my water comments, uh, from here for the next, I think, ten to fifteen slides. I'm going to hand it over to David Hogan, uh, who's with M Group and he will bring the commission up to speed on what's happened, uh, since the last meeting, the, the feedback. Some of my big case, um, addition to the feedback he gave to the commission, what we heard from the council and then some of the actions we've taken on the housing sites, uh, since then. So with that, David, if you're ready, uh, you can pick it up here.
Thank you very much. Uh, commissioners, good evening. Hopefully you can all hear me clearly. Uh, I wanted to begin kind of bringing the commission. I'm sorry. Okay.
Virtualize the volume, David, just one second.
Okay, is this better? Is this, is this clearer? I'm getting feedback on my end. Okay, well, let me try to continue here and you can let me know if you can't hear me.
It's better.
That's better. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your patience. Uh, virtual meetings are always an interesting experience. Uh, as you know, the commission and council have been going through this process and we're really down to the, the, the final stages of this initial selection process. Staff and consultant have gone through, look, exploring the use of different school sites and church sites as part of the inventory. Uh, we've come up with recommended densities for the different sites that both the commission and council have weighed in on. Uh, some of the council's direction, it was supported by the commission, was uh, adding housing to the Campbell Technology Park, uh, seemed like a good idea. As well as considering city-owned corpse, uh, courtyard and First Street garage sites for, uh, for future opportunity sites. And staff will be discussing some of the details of those a little later this evening. One of the things to consider is, you know, when should mixed use developments be required and when should they be optional? And again, staff will be discussing that later, along with concerns about new development exceeding the city's, uh, seventy-five foot, uh, building height level. And we have some information later on that as well. And finally, uh, a few weeks ago, we conducted a public outreach with property owners. Everybody who had a property as an idea, as a potential opportunity site was contacted. Uh, we had a meeting, we had twenty-five or thirty property owners show up, representing about forty different parcels. And there was, uh, there was mixed results in that, uh, but we have, but that's been incorporated into the results. Could I get the next slide, please? Thank you. So kind of summarizing, uh, staff met with the face-based organizations, talked to the school districts, uh, talked with V T A. And the Winchester site is, as is noted in the staff report for the Winchester station, they are starting a process of looking at providing housing there, which is consistent with Campbell's plan for housing. And as of, uh, yesterday, there had thirty-two responses received from different property owners. So as you can see, we are continuing to outreach, uh, as we try to get forward here and, uh, finalize our tier one sites. Next, please. Okay. Based upon input from the commission, uh, and then agreed upon and directed by the city council, we've come up with a ranking criteria that allows us to look at the different sites and make an assessment of what are really the best sites in the city. And there's five criteria. Each one was done with, it either agreed with a criteria and that kid, it got eight point. If it didn't agree with the criteria, it got zero points. So the first one is site size. Uh, H C D likes to see sites larger than half an acre, up to ten acres. But that wasn't really, the top was not an issue for the Campbell. It's more the smaller size. There was another expression of concern by the commission and council that, uh, they don't want to approve one house here and one house there. They want to look at doing a reasonable contribution. So, uh, a cutoff of fifty units was also assigned. If a project site could generate fifty or more units, it got a point. If it had less than that, it got zero points. That doesn't mean the site was, was excluded if all the, because this is a cumulative criteria. The third was good location. That is, it, does it meet A F F H? Is it near transit? Is it a location that additional housing should be, should be considered? And then fourth is property owner interest. If the property owner said, yes, we're really interested in redeveloping for housing, they got a point. If they were opposed or hadn't voiced an opinion, then they didn't get a point. And finally, to integrate the city's council's concerns over, uh, future sales tax revenues, we went over the list of the top one hundred sales tax producing businesses in the city. If you were one of those, you didn't get a point. If you weren't, you got a point. Overall, there weren't that many sites that were really high sales tax, uh, producing concerns. Next, please. So based upon that, sites were ranked in theory from a score of, of zero to five, though actually it was one to five. And staff's recommending if, if the site's got a score of three or higher, those should be considered tier one. Those are the sites that have the most going for them in terms of being a future housing site. And I think it's always important to remember that, uh, even if a site isn't a housing opportunity site, they can still propose to develop with housing. This is not, we're not capping the potential sites for the city. So as you can see, we had ninety-six sites. Uh, there's four sites with the Campbell Technology Park that in theory at thirty units per acre could generate five hundred and twenty-two units. The two city heights about three hundred and all the other tier one sites came out to be forty-seven hundred and eighty-one, which ironically is real close to the target that the, the council and staff were looking at. So that's a total of, if all of the sites are included of, of up to fifty-six hundred and ten. Next, please. So I wanted to take a moment to explain the, the ledge, the legend that you're not going to see for the following maps. For the, we've done, we've included the tier two sites, uh, all for reference, but they're all grayed out. They aren't the sites that our staff is recommending. So those are the specific densities and those are not being shown. For the other tier one sites, they go from that yellow color at twenty, the pink at thirty, blue, purple and black at forty-five, sixty and seventy-five. So as you're going through the maps, that will kind of hover on as we go through the process. Keep in mind that the blue and the purple and the black are the higher intensity sites. Uh, the yellow sites are generally at a lower density and while they may provide housing for what's called the missing middle, the moderate income, those aren't necessarily going to be the highly desirable sites for affordable housing. Next, please.
Uh, I'm sorry, before you pass this slide, I had a question on this slide.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. This is Max Kamkar. Um, so, uh, on the yellow, we say twenty. Do we, do we mean twenty to twenty-nine? And then thirty, we mean thirty to forty-four? Because otherwise we're not addressing twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, you know, and all the numbers in between. Just want to be clear. What we mean.
Okay.
Expression. So it could be some other lower number in the range, but we haven't yet established that. We're only studying again the maximum global, okay, the environmental. So these are all, it'd be twenty max, thirty max, forty-five max, et cetera.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next slide, please. So this should actually be the South Winchester, not Central Campbell. So I'm not sure what happened there. But you can see what I want to point out is the, uh, on the right side of the screen, you've got the, the Campbell Technology Park at thirty. You've got higher density around the Winchester station. And some of the state, some of the sites going up along Winchester, but along this, a lot of the smaller Winchester sites dropped off in terms of, uh, their overall score. In most cases, it was because the sites aren't very big and there may have been a lack of property owner interest. The same two up in the top right corner, where a lot of the fifth housing, uh, housing element sites had been identified. A lot of those had the same problem. A lot of them are kind of small. Some of them may have, uh, existing functional uses that may be, be undesirable as a tier one site. Uh, next slide, please. Oh, boy. Okay. This is supposed to be the Bascom Avenue area. And what you can see is, uh, for one point one and one point two and seventeen, those are really cutouts of larger properties. Kind of showing the conceptual location, but the fact is that we're looking at a higher intensity sites around the office buildings at the Prune Yard, as well as some other stuff. Uh, and as you can see, we've got a good selection of forty-five and seventy, or excuse me, sixty and seventy-five units per acre. With forty-five units per acre on the east side of Bascom Avenue, trying to provide a transition to the single family neighborhoods beyond. Uh, sites two oh, two point one and point two, that's the Frye's site, thirty-five is Staples. Uh, site one seventy at the top of the map is the, uh, parking lot, uh, behind Coles that doesn't get much use and everybody thought it was a good site. So you can see that again, the, the smaller, potentially a less desirable tier two sites, uh, south of Campbell Avenue. Of a lot of those are being dropped, have been dropped out of tier one. Next, please. Oh my, okay. Uh, you can see some of the other sites along Hamilton Avenue and, uh, Upper Winchester. Uh, all in the, uh, the sixty zone, some of the sites along Schalmar, south of the, uh, Frye's site at forty-five, as well as some sites at, at forty-five that connect the downtown to the Prune Yard, which is one of the things that, uh, the plan seems to be looking at focusing on as a, a connection potential between those two, uh, areas of attraction. Next, please. Oh my. Okay, out along Hamilton Avenue. Uh, you can see there was a number of sites looked at out here and I believe two oh, uh, three was the former PetSmart site. It dropped off the list because it is one of the city's sales tax gen, uh, higher sales tax generators. So what we've got is some of the smaller sites at the end of the center, as well as some things next to, uh, uh, the expressway. And as you can see, based upon the decision of the council, the, uh, the site one sixty-two, which is the uptake site, uh, is, has been targeted at twenty units per acre. Next, please. All right, Wes Campbell. Uh, again, you can see the earlier sites, uh, the, the church and the daycare have been removed, didn't survive the previous cut. The two sites at two oh, two sixty-eight and two oh seven, it was decided that based upon their size, those sites didn't. it was decided that based upon their size, those sites didn't make the cut. But you can see you've got some other sites out here that, uh, meet the, the criteria that the, the city council identified. Next, please. Oh, there we go. Uh, most of the South Campbell sites remained, uh, on the list after the, after this evaluation purposes. Uh, the most common characteristic was this is an area that is really largely single family. And there was a noticeable need to provide additional services in that area. If you go in the center of the screen, uh, sites, uh, what are fourteen point two to eleven? The sites at the top had been removed by the council and some of the other sites, uh, either for size or use turned out to have scores less than three, so they've been removed from the list. Uh, next, please. And with this, I think I'm turning the discussion back to, uh, Director Eastwood.
David, so, uh, in addition to all of those sites, we did want to call out, uh, three different sites, uh, sort of a sidebar conversation. Uh, we do think they merit to be, uh, tier one sites. And we do believe that they all should go forward into the EIR. But there are some, uh, unique considerations and this includes the Campbell Technology Park, uh, which another commission deliberated last time. And then two city-owned sites and we, sorry, thought that at least the Campbell Technology Park in tandem with one of the city-owned sites is something we would start to look at together because it presents a unique opportunity. Um, so you all remember the Campbell Technology Park, um, a little bit of history, I think it's been in the past reports. It was, uh, formerly a drive-in. This was a Campbell redevelopment agency project, created an R and D technology center. Uh, the current owner has, uh, indicated there, he has a lot of issues with filling the vacancies in the site because of its remote location and has, uh, kind of meetings and indicated interest, uh, to convert to housing. Uh, we did initially indicate a density of thirty dwelling units per acre. I know there's been some discussion at the commission, maybe the council that could even go higher. Um, it is under current agreement, uh, we're looking at the particulars of that. And this comes from when it, uh, was a redevelopment agency site to commit the site to be used, uh, consistently for its R and D, uh, technology site use up until, I believe, twenty thirty. So Campbell would have to go in and modify, um, eliminate those agreements.
Till when? Could you repeat that?
Twenty thirty. Yeah. So, so additional, um, eight years, I almost said nine years, uh, now. So we'd have to modify that. Uh, in tandem with that, we've, uh, if we can go to the next slide, thanks, Stephen. Uh, we've identified the corporation yard and you've looked at this before, it has a potential housing site. Uh, it's a great, great location for housing, uh, surrounded by other medium to high density housing. Uh, right next to those guys Creek Trail, you're a five minute walk to Light Rail, a five minute walk to downtown. A perfect place, uh, but an unwind geographically for housing. Um, and both the commission and council have, uh, favorably uh, indicated, uh, good potential site. One key consideration, where does the corporation yard go? So we've, uh, we've started to have discussions with property owner, the Campbell Technology Park on the option of moving, uh, the corporation yard to that location. Uh, it's geographically favorable, it's isolated, it's next to light industrial uses. Um, corporate yards, um, usually shouldn't be adjacent to housing to get land use in the face issues. So it's a actually not a bad opportunity to relocate across the freeway and still provide central access to most of Campbell. Uh, there's improvements that we'd have to talk about. Uh, and maybe secondary access, access into the Campbell Technology Park. Uh, but if those present opportunity to look at these in tandem, um, to, to both move the corporate yard uses to that site, uh, consider something like a land swap where this, then this site would be used for housing. Uh, of course, we would like a lot of affordable housing on this site since it's a city-owned site. And then, uh, at the same time, uh, look at the redevelopment agreements and then allow the tech park to go into housing. So uh, from the administration, the department's mind, uh, we just wanted to have a holistic discussion with the Campbell Technology Park owner on this opportunity. And start to look at these things together as an opportunity for housing on both sides and could potentially be a win-win. So we're putting these a little bit aside and wanted to talk more with the Campbell Technology Park owner on that opportunity and, and continue to pursue that. And then finally, the, the last site is a city-owned site, uh, just down the street, uh, is the First Street Parking Garage. It's an old parking garage, uh, two levels, uh, I think it has about three hundred parking stalls. Uh, current developments, uh, do require that the parking be maintained. We're continuing to look at that. Uh, so it's really a difficult site if it's going to be developed as housing and retain existing parking. So we're Steve and I have been talking to some affordable housing developers, actually the county housing authority to look at schematically, could you do that, um, to look at the specs and the size? And, and from a pro forma standpoint, you know, could you actually build affordable housing on this site? So we're just doing some due diligence now on the feasibility of developing the site. And based on that, this site could remain in or it could drop it off. Uh, it's a great location again, downtown, uh, almost a stone's throw from Light Rail Station, but it does have some constraints associated with it. So with that, to summarize, um, to pull it all together, we had recommended initially, uh, that the city consider at least a thirty percent buffer of our arena targets, which is thirty-three hundred units. Uh, looking deeper at the HCD requirements, uh, trying to keep, uh, more flexible options and make sure we do hit those development targets over the next eight years. Uh, where, or we think three, three hundred should be the floor, but at least, uh, aim for about five thousand units, uh, designated that gives more flexibility over the next eight years to develop enough units. If you look at the tier one sites together, all of them is fifty-six hundred units. So that's a nice buffer even above the higher five thousand unit, um, indicator that we've, uh, demarcated. If the city-owned sites and the Campbell Technology Park wasn't, were not to go forward, even if you took those out, uh, that puts the rest of the units about, uh, forty-eight hundred units. So there's still a comfortable buffer there. Uh, again, as I mentioned earlier, um, as you go forward, it's better to study more in the IR and then as you get to final adoption, uh, alternatives are, are reducing less sites, uh, presents less of an option. So we think a bigger buffer going into the EIR uh, puts Campbell in a better position to hedge its bets on considering sites as it goes throughout two thousand twenty-two and final adoption. So based on that, uh, that's the first part of the evening. This is probably the most substantial part of the discussion. And, uh, I'll go ahead and close it up there and head it back to the commission if you'd like to take public comments and start your deliberations.
Thank you. But, um, so if you have any questions, start with.
Yeah, a question occurred to me around the, um, the city yard. I'm sure there's a deep dive in here somewhere, but you'd said moving it to Campbell Technology Park. Is that what I heard?
That is correct.
So that number, the five twenty-two related to Campbell Technology Park, is that with the corporation yard associated with it?
Well, that's a good question. Yeah. So I, I think and I'll look to staff confirm. The initial calculations was thirty dwelling units over the entirety of the park. I don't think we considered a net out um, of, of the acreage needed for the corporation yard, but on.
That's correct. It is included. So it assumes both sites would be developing as housing. But there is also po- possibilities of partnerships with other agencies where we could build a, 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 a combined corporation yard that might not even be considered on that. Okay. And, and if there's further discussion, I'll, I'll save my comments for that, but thank you for the clarification.
Please, Commissioner Craig.
Sure. No, no, just a couple of questions. This is really a great report. It's just so, uh, based in reality. I really like it. We're getting down to the real numbers here. Cause a couple of major things are, I'm just not completely clear on it. I guess data is there too, but uh, so for all these tier one sites, have all the, have all the property owners given a thumbs up on these or are just certain ones that we've been made, managed to make contact with?
Well, so there's actually a table that's included in the report that provides like a rundown of all the property responses. We've not received positive, like responses from every owner. But where a non-response was provided, we didn't give a weight, like a weight score to it. So property feedback was taken into account in the methodology. So tier one site got a plus one, effectively a point if a property owner had expressed interest.
Okay, okay. I just, I just wasn't sure. It sounded like almost, I think, I saw, I saw property owners run board for all these sites, which would, would, is great, but that would be a miracle in a way. Uh, another thing, so we're talking, when we talk about the, the units that are, the housing units that are available. And we're also talking about mixed use sites. And we're talking about, you know, uh, maximum number of units at the density we're looking at at the acreage, but if there's, if there's also retail or commercial being developed on the site, does that lower the, the number of units? Or, or are we still looking at that many housing units even with mixed use project?
Yeah, mixed use designation changes the density for a site. So the higher end of the range would still apply.
It still apply, okay. Uh, and then so, uh, and, and I know it's way, way too early for maybe for something like this, but in terms of the below market rate housing, uh, you know, so when we got the city-owned sites or government-owned sites, I know the VTA is talking about a hundred percent BMR type of, of thing. When we talk about the, the commercial sites, then the numbers, you know, change pretty quickly. I just did the quick math here when I was thinking about the Frye's site. Now, if we look at the max, both, both Frye's sites, you look at the maximum units, how many they can build. Then you get just to the fifteen percent BMR, then you wind up with eighty-two BMR units, which is a nice number. But when you consider the Winchester Light Rail, you can get a hundred and thirteen units, but they can all be B, BMR. So, you know, I guess we haven't done the math in terms of the possibilities of BMR units versus housing units and overall, because there's just so many variables in that, correct?
I'll answer that. Not yet. Um, we, yeah, if you did to quick math across the, the city, you could take that fifteen percent. I, I think as, as you mentioned, we're trying to look a lot more aggressively at some partnerships, measure a VTA being one. We're going to go to affordable housing developers. Uh, in the spring, we want to be back, uh, for a commission council consideration, affordable housing overlay zone, uh, that might look to focus and, and allow have the, have the market more available, but affordable housing developers come in and sort of tailor the conditions, incentives that affordable housing development happens more than, than standard market rate. Um, so anyways, we're looking at a lot more tools that I think will increase the number of BMR units beyond just that fifteen percent inclusionary. But that's your question. We haven't got down to this.
Yeah, I guess that's where I'm at. I don't want to get off track, but can, uh, uh, can you get the, the fifteen percent requirement for BMR? First, if I know in a lot of these projects we're talking about, you know, no developer's going to want to do BM, I mean, who would, wouldn't want to, but if they get some incentives and they and maybe even get more. So I, I didn't know if the fifteen percent is going to be the max on any of these projects or or whether there be possibilities for more.
Well, I know it's the floor. We have to come back. We have open discussions on if, if the city should increase that, but it's.
Can we talk about, and maybe this is going to come up in the presentation, the overlay zone for, for affordable housing. Is that going to come up later in the presentation? Are you, are we going to discuss that all now or is that off topic?
Uh, not tonight, Commissioner Craig. It'll be later in the spring of this year.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Great questions. Commissioners, this is.
I don't know which questions I should ask now versus later. Um, but, um, on the, uh, well, the first thing that comes up is the corporation yard question. Um, what, what's what's the acreage of the corp, you know what the acreage of the corporation yard is right now? How much space you need for a corporation yard?
Commissioner, it's right around three acres.
Okay. So it would only take up at max three acres out of the seventeen acres, right?
And then moving into the. Are locations, I guess generally it would take the same amount of room or expectations.
I, I, I'm, uh, I'll save my comments about what I think of that idea later, but uh, I just wanted to know that for now. Uh, the other thing I have a question about is it see, it, it appears to me, I just did some quick research recently, that, uh, at some point before, when we submit to the state, we will have to stipulate which parcel will be for affordable housing. And I wanted to confirm whether that's true. It's on the application form that, uh, you're supposed to tell you, tell, is this going to be an affordable parcel or not? So I have a question about that. And then the other question I have is that I was actually thinking about uh, bringing up, and I noticed in the Sierra Club, the Sierra Club letter was in the packet, they mention probabilities. They're sa, they're saying that the state requires uh, to have probabilities, uh, incorporated in the, in the report. Now, it's my impression that that has not been something that cities have done in the past. But there's apparently a law, uh, they say there's a law associated with that. And so my question on that is, are we going to do a probability estimate on, on the, uh, listings, on the inventory um, as well? So I guess at least those two things.
Sure. I got some thoughts on this. I think the best person to answer, if he's online, might, um, be Jeff Bradley, who's done a lot of research in this area. So Jeffrey available for this question?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Director Eastwood. This is Jeff Bradley. Um, thank you for the question, uh, Commissioner. Um, we have looked at it from that perspective. And one, one of the, one of the ways, uh, that is laid out in the HCD Housing and, uh, Community Development Department Guidebook on this topic is simply looking at what was the ratio of sites that were developed under the previous current housing element, the fit, known as the fifth cycle. And so the numbers, um, that we've calculated with city staff is that twenty-six percent of the sites are calculated during the current cycle. And based on the, the package of sites before you tonight, uh, we calculate, uh, if we assume that all of the properties where we have affirmative, positive feedback from the property owners. If we assume that all those sites develop and we assume that none of the, the sites that had negative property owner interest, lack of interest, we assume zero percent of those sites develop. Of all the remaining sites, including the two city sites and the Campbell Technology Park, we would need twenty-nine percent of those sites to develop. So it's, it's strikingly close to the percentage that we, um, observe from the, from the current planning period. And our position is that, um, it's reasonable to assume that that percentage is going to tick up a bit, um, given the pretty significant increase in densities that the city is contemplating, uh, through this housing element. And as we all know, as, as densities, uh, increase, um, projects that previously uh, did not, were not financially feasible, uh, didn't, uh, pencil out, so to speak, uh, start to, start to go into that category of feasibility. So we, we think this, and that we think this, these, these facts uh, support the planning commission's recommendation, uh, that we've heard consistently to kind of edge towards the higher numbers, you know, the five thousand, the fifty-five hundred, uh, that Director Eastwood summarized kind of support that, um, that approach, uh, given that we do need to convince HCD that we have a, a reasonable roadmap, uh, not just on paper, but to actually achieve, uh, this, this needed new housing, uh, in, in the real world. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was the other question was about the, uh, requirement to stipulate which parcels will be affordable housing.
Is that, um, uh, you're asking if the, if the housing element itself has to stipulate which parcels or or if applicants coming in have to disclose what they're, what they're doing in terms of affordability?
Okay. Uh, uh, it's just that I saw an application form online uh, from the HCD that, that showed a, you know, basically a spreadsheet like we have. And, and, and one of the, one of the columns is, is this an affordable, is this affordable parcel? So I don't know if you're going to be required to fill that out and if you are, when are we going to make, make that decision? Will that be after the IR or sometime between now and then?
No, that's a good question. And typically, um, the way HCD and the way cities, uh, deal with that is we don't, we don't tag specific properties um, as, as potential affordable, uh, you know, s- say a hundred percent affordable or highly affordable uh, over and above, uh, you know, the bare minimum fifteen percent below market rate programs that, that the commission was just discussing. The, the underlying theory is that if, if any parcel that is meeting certain densities, also known as the default densities, um, that it's assumed that all of those parcels are appropriate for affordable housing. Um, of course, they're also appropriate for market rate housing. So it doesn't, it doesn't guarantee that they'll go affordable, but it is an acknowledgement that as densities approach those default densities of twenty or thirty units per acre, it's much more likely, much more possible and feasible for affordable housing to occur on those sites.
Okay, thank you. I have one more question about the First Street Parking Garage. You, you mentioned, uh, Director, that, uh, there's a requirement to keep the parking. So there's two levels of parking. You know, there's a residential and offices that are associated, the parking associated with the, uh, complex. Uh, is, is the requirement to keep the entire set of parking, partly because I know it's like the, the upper level's never used. And of course it will need, need to be parked. And of course, it will need, need to be parking also for, for the residents. If we, if they build something there, there would be, need to be parking as well. So, uh, do we know if it's like, do you have to keep both those levels with all those spaces? Which is a lot of spaces. There's like 300, 250, 300 spaces, whether that's all required to be kept?
And unfortunately, the answer to that question is not completely clear. It would be subject to negotiations, uh, with the, uh, property owners who were involved in the, uh, uh, original financing of, of the parking and the subsequent agreements for maintenance of the parking.
What's up in the air? Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any more questions?
Uh, I have a few. Um, I, I mentioned, uh, to Director Eastwood, what is it? 476 East Campbell is listed as Site 260, I think it's Site 267 on the maps, but it isn't, as far as I can tell, either on the Tier One or Tier Two list. It's currently for sale and, uh, maybe we should include it. I had a question about, so when you say that sites can still be developed even if they're not on this list. One question I had was, a lot of these proposed developments are not feasible under our current FAR restrictions, but even our highest density residential zone is .55 FAR, and, um, we haven't changed that. So if we don't change that, um, I guess if, what difficulties does it add to develop a site if it's not listed on this? Even if we don't particularly upzone it?
Well, start off, Stephen, to, on the, on the first one, the information I got from our staff, I think that site, which did, just did come up, the market is right down the street. Um, I think our initial assessment, we had a screening, we had, um, the property had a, a certain size and the buildings of a certain age. And I think the, the staff's initial read is the buildings are a little bit too new on that parcel. Um, long story short, uh, if the commission would like to recommend, just to look at, look at it further and we can look at it between now and the council meeting to see if it can be included. Uh, we can, but it had not been included on the list. And with respect to the second question, I had thought FAR was more of a non-residential standard. Again, I'm newer to the code here, but I'll ask Stephen to address that.
A few parts of that. So it is true, like the FAR of a mixed use project is not counted against it. So the residential component of mixed use product does not count against the maximum floor area ratio. That's helpful. Uh, I'll also add that, you know, we do have other planning, uh, efforts underway, such as objective standards. We're going to be working as part of that to develop new and improved mixed use and multifamily development standards. Something we're aware of, there's scaling issues with our densities, especially as we're approaching these new densities. The code really doesn't support or plan for the types of densities we're not now talking about. Separately, I mean, if you do have standards that just don't help you pencil out the number of units, the Housing Committee Act provides some guidance to, you know, deviate from those standards. And also density bonus, there's, uh, a lot of these, most all of our housing projects that have come forward, uh, in the last several years have all been density bonus projects, which are able to explore both concessions and waivers to deep, to again, breach a development, say, let's say restrictive floor area ratio or other ones. Provided that there's a cost performance that demonstrates it's financially feasible and necessary. So there's a lot of ways to kind of get around it, is my long story short. And some of these are under development and we're going to be talking about them, uh, later this year.
Okay, so i- in practice, um, what are we doing to the sites by not, by not including them, but to the Tier Two sites? Like what are we, to what extent are we discouraging development on those sites by not including them? I understand it's unlikely in the first place because of the factors that have been identified.
Well, I'd say, well, David spoke to us a little bit before. So, I mean, our focus now is the housing element. Designated sites, building our units to meet our arena numbers, market rate, below market. Here, I was certified by HCD. And so they're focused on, hey, what sites are you selecting and why can they develop? You had a lot of questions around that. Now, nothing prevents if it's zoned residential and allows residential development, development from someone coming in anyway, anytime in the next eight years. And the city would get credit for that. So to answer your question, uh, I wouldn't take it as a discouragement of residential development. If the zoning is already there and allows residential development, that's, that's great. Um, but for us to document certified HCD sites, we're doing everything we can between zoning and tools to allow them to develop to meet our arena numbers, um, that's kind of a heightened bucket. So I hope that makes sense. So you can, just because a site is not included does not mean you cannot develop housing on the site. And, and just some of the rationale, instead of these sites, especially the downtown sites, they've been in our housing element. I understand it two or three cycles, um, and, and we really just haven't had development on them. So I didn't, we're focusing on other sites where we've actually got some developer interest and there, there's more, um, um, feasibility for development. So anyways, I have to answer your question.
Um, so for example, with the site of 476 East Campbell, if we don't list it, uh, presumably the current allowable density on the site is not 75 an acre. So like any kind of upzoning that we're talking about doing here is tied to whether or not something's included, included in our, uh, opportunity sites list, correct?
Uh, I don't want us to get too far ahead of ourselves. I mean, the current density is 27 units to the acre of that site. Um, one of the technical things which we'll be talking about in an up and coming meeting, February, March, um, will be about making adjustments to some other densities to account for the change in the method of calculation between the old method of growth and the new method of growth. As part of that, we'll likely bring forward a discussion point about, uh, sites which were previously considered under 27, like the high density residential was part of our preferred land use map. And feedback which we've received from the general plan advisory committee, there's this broader discussion about bringing up those highest density ranges, as being at 27, up to the 45 level. Um, we'll talk about more what that means as part of that, that technical meeting which will be up and coming. We're going to focus to, to our director's point a moment ago. Um, we won't focus on just the sites, the housing opportunity sites, which we're using and submitting to HCD to get a certified housing element by the end of, uh, this year.
Okay, um, so, all right, I, I understand that. Um, so do we need to do anything at this? Um, I attended the meeting with the Winchester, um, that the VTA put together. And the Winchester site is pretty small and there's neighboring it a church parking lot. So if the developer were able to acquire part of that parking lot to make a larger project, which would be significant here because they're able to do it at a high density, it's a measure A project and so on. Do we have to do anything to mark that parking lot for high density? So if they acquire part of it, they don't have to get a, an extra rezoning or something like that?
I mean, the sites would need to be identified at a higher density in order to develop at a higher density, right? So, but as far as that site, I mean, if they were to take a portion of it, that proportional area would be assigned its relative density allocation. So if they were to use that area, in all likelihood, I don't know if they'd be expanding the building in that area. But yeah, if you want it to be at 75. Now separately, as part of our policy development, we're going to be talking about an affordable housing overlay. I, I think Commissioner Cray mentioned it earlier. It's something which we could also explore as opportunities for sites, maybe which I thought, um, housing opportunity sites that we could study separately.
Okay.
Uh, this is also maybe even getting into a possibly like a transfer of development rights program as well.
Okay, that makes sense. Um, I had one, um, one more question for, uh, sorry, for Mr. Bradley. Last cycle, I said that we had 26% of our opportunity sites developed. Um, where did you get that from?
From Mr. Rose City, uh, about eight feet in front of you there.
Okay. So what that is, it's an assessment of all the parcels that were included in our Arena Five cycle. So if you do a numeric count, I think there was 100 and, I don't have my table in front of me right now. It's like 132 sites, something in that range. And like 32 of them or so had developed. So just from a pure parcel perspective, not taking into account the land mass or unit count. Just pure, pure numerically on the parcels, if you divide that out, came up to 26%. And I, I would, I'll just reiterate the, the comment made by, um, Jeff Bradley is that that lower percentage, the 26% you saw, was, it was a status quo housing element update. We hadn't raised any densities. It's important to keep in mind that this one, this update would be almost the polar opposite of that because we're substantially increasing densities. And so the likelihood of redevelopment of sites which we identify will be substantially higher. That's why we're anticipating that although it might have been 26% under the globe in this 6 housing element update, much higher. How much higher, I will tell.
Okay. Um, and I'd just also like to compliment, uh, staff and our consultants on doing outreach to property owners. Um, having like been following a number of other cities' housing element processes, uh, we are way ahead of the curve on that. So like, great job on, on getting property owners involved.
I always say kudos to Stephen. We set up a innovative way that property owners can scan a QR code, go to a simple survey on site, let us know how interested they are. And I actually went out and did a, an educational Zoom meeting with as many as we could. I would say it's, and when, when anything you have for property owners to address and the address is out of state, um, it, it has been a little hard to get through to some of the property owners. But the ones we've heard of, uh, we've had a, a pretty good engagement rate.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Any more questions? Um, I just have a couple, uh, really following up on the density. Could you remind me how we got to the default densities, um, per the Tier One recommendations?
I guess I can start.
So is this the, how did we get to the densities?
This is what we've just presented. Yeah, so we, I think this goes back to October, if you remember the meeting. We had indicated some themes, uh, and originally our thinking was around the, the light rail stations. Um, and this recommendation had come from VTA and a couple of affordable housing developers, really to make TOD and affordable housing work 75 dwelling units per acre. That came from a couple of data points, so we latched onto that. Uh, on the commercial areas, um, staff have just kind of deliberately, uh, what a higher density is, that would attract development. And we know that 60 dwelling units per acre. And I'll just say anecdotally, uh, to some of the points earlier, we've had proprietors come in and say, wow, now that 60 dwellers per acre, I'm actually interested in housing. But the thinking was a higher density, not as high as TOD on those commercial corridors. And as it goes down from there, I think the 45 was for kind of smaller sites. Uh, you have more adjacencies to residential, you have to think about that contextually. And then down into 30 to 20, um, was really more in our residential neighborhoods. You see those in San Tomas and then the site that we had allowed the community talking about, the Llewellyn site. So that helps for context, Chair Chang.
Yeah, that's, and I can add just a little bit more context. And the 45 was a particular data point which had come from our general plan update, the Invision Campbell. So the preferred land use map that talked about and contemplated 45 units as well. So it's kind of like one benchmark figure. But some of the lower densities, you see like the 20 units to acre that you see outside on the Llewellyn site, that's the, um, the uplift family services site. Those are, that was feedback which we had received as recently as December from the city council. So those, those decisions were recently made and reflected in, in what you see before you tonight.
Okay, thank you. Um, and the second question, um, is to do with the technology park. Has there been any discussion about a second access road? Um, I know there's that type of blocked off pri, I think it's a private road from a previous meeting.
I know there's three, Stephen knows this more. So the one related is the Campbell Technology Drive, which connects to, I can't remember another road. Uh, there's two other points out. I believe there's a EVA access that's, um, allowed up near the Mobile Home Park. And then another point we're looking at, it's called, uh, Christitch Lane. It's a private road. It goes through some industrial area. Um, but the thinking is really if a, if the corporate are just put there, um, having that access out through the industrial area and a secondary access in general is pretty critical. So, um, I'll, Stephen, weigh in on the, uh, EVA access, if I got that right.
That's, that's all correct. So yeah, they, they have security, there's an existing easement across the Mobile Home Park that allows for emergency vehicles. So tire trucks in theory could get in and out from that roadway network. But yeah, Christitch is a private, private street. It's owned in common by multiple owners along Christitch. So it's something that would need to be secured as part of what they value, how that would work out.
Okay, thank you.
Please.
I have a brief question. So if the sites weren't on the map, that they weren't even in a Tier Two, they're obviously not considered, can they, can the developer build housing that then counts towards our, our totals? Kind of like phantom or hidden?
Absolutely. So numbers which aren't included are, you will have some turnover of sites. I mean, we had all these other calculations that kind of went into our assumptions. Like we, we do anticipate some ADU production, that kind of stuff that's not reflected on these maps as well. Yeah, you could take any site which has a residential land use designation, build units on it. And even if it's not a housing opportunity site, it will count towards our, our annual progress reports, our figures. Um, moreover, to that point, uh, we're not allowed to receive credit for plant, like pretty much assume that we're going to have density bonus projects either. And density bonus projects will also attribute additional affordable units above and beyond what we're, what we're projecting in our, in our tables.
Okay. So, uh, I don't want to nitpick on specific sites, but one occurred to me when I was reviewing the maps or seeing the presentation. And maybe it was a city council call that I couldn't read in the notes or it was someone else's discussion, but the self-storage unit off Salmar, uh, south of Hamilton. I, I'd brought that up in past meetings. How come that didn't make the, the cut or the grade for, uh, an opportunity site, given its prime location?
So I'll go in and start and I'll, uh, allow David or Jeff to maybe add in here in a minute. But, um, I mean, when we're doing a lot of this assessment, we're looking at viable uses of tenant, like tenant spaces, like businesses that are unlikely to relocate in the next eight years. It's really kind of the purpose of this exercise. I, I think that when we were starting to do our analysis, we couldn't find very many cases of a self-storage site relocating or selling. They tend to buy the land, hold it forever. And so the likelihood of that particular site relocating in the next eight-year planning period, uh, without a property owner interest letter was very low.
Even, even if we have that density opportunity where, you know, it was 27, but now it's 75 or, or whatever the calculation came out to, that wouldn't raise their value.
It wasn't, good question. And it wasn't enough to raise it to the level of be considered a Tier One site. So obviously we had evaluated that site at prior junctures. But now that we're getting, we're, the, the funnel is narrowing. We're just getting to the easy lowest hanging fruit, the sites which we feel is, are the most likely to redevelop. The sites with the highest probability, getting back to that prior point of redeveloping. And because it was a lower, uh, ranked site, it wasn't included as a site which would be submitting to HCD. Now that site, if I recall correctly, does have a mixed use land use designation and could still build as a housing site, but just not with that higher density.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um.
Sorry. On the corporation yard, um, are you still looking at other possibilities? Are you looking at other sites and considering them?
Come up. I mean, one thought is, I know the Central Open Space District, I think, has a corporation yard here. And there was a thought of talking to Los Gatos and adjacent cities. Um, so those are, those are some of my thoughts. I haven't pursued a lot yet. Uh, we saw the, uh, of course, the tech park as a, an option. It's interesting that this option on the tech park was actually discussed about 20 years ago. It didn't pan out. But to answer your question, we have started to look a little bit at those other options I just mentioned.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll open it up to public comment. So I have, um, one speaker card for in-person. Um, Andrea, I don't know, do we have any online wishing to speak?
We do have some online that would like to speak.
Okay, great. So let me start with, um, uh, the in-person ones. So, uh, speaker card from Sarah Chaffin, if you'd like to approach. Good evening.
Hi, thanks very much for having me. So I just wanted to.
Uh, can I, can I ask you to state your name and address for the record, please? Thank you.
My name is Sarah Chaffin, and I'm here about, um, 2089 and 2075 South Bascom, 1712, 1740, and 1750 South Winchester. Um, and actually, I'm also want to discuss 1627, 1645, 1639 South Bascom, um, and 1657. So basically, uh, first of all, I submitted a letter of interest in December because we're interested in developing, um, one of the sites on Winchester and one of the sites on Bascom. And so I wanted to just basically thank the staff because they included it, um, in the Tier One sites. So I just wanted to give the planning commission feedback that the staff has been really helpful and really responsive. So I really appreciate that. Um, I also wanted to mention, um, Council, Commissioner Cray. I also wanted to mention, Council Commissioner Cray mentioned below-market housing. So actually, we are interested in developing below-market rate housing if it's feasible. We're long-term members of the community. So I think if there's a way that we can work with the staff and, you know, the council and the commission, I think there is a way to make that happen. I, because I think the community really does need workforce housing and below-market rate housing. So I just wanted to mention that because you raised that point. And then the other thing that I wanted to mention is sixteen twenty-seven, sixteen forty-five, sixteen thirty-nine, and sixteen fifty-seven. So those are contiguous parcels. And I guess it would probably just be easier, do you guys know where City Forest is? It's basically from City Forest to Reed Veterinary Hospital. So actually, on this chart, because I didn't put it in my letter, it says that the property owner has not shown interest. But actually, we are interested in developing housing there. So I just wanted to make sure, because I, that it, that, you know, makes it onto the chart. And the other thing is because they are contiguous proper, you know, parcels, it would actually be above fifty units. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that to make sure it was on the record that you know that we want to develop housing there. And also, I thought perhaps you could explore the idea of doing the housing at seventy-five units per dwelling acre in that particular area. When I went to the special meeting of the council, they particularly pointed out that type of area as where they'd like to maximize density. So maybe now that the staff knows that the property owner is interested, maybe that's something that they can explore before the meeting on Tuesday. So, I mean, that's pretty much it, unless you guys have some questions for me.
Just, I'm trying to remember, that's that whole corner. And there's a tire place behind Cities, right? Is that included, the tire, the, 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 the CDs Forest building? There's a tire place.
No, the, so the tire place is actually on Hamilton.
Okay.
So this would be on the other side, so it's the Bascom side of.
So it's the Cities, CTs building, and then down to the car wash, is what you're saying?
Right, but it not including the Cities building, so it's.
Well, not including.
Right, so there's, it's that, that little strip right there.
All right. That's great.
So that would be great if we could, you know, get some housing there. And the, oh, and the only other thing that I wanted to point out is two oh seven five and two oh eight nine, South Bascom. Because they're actually contiguous, I believe they would yield more than fifty units per acre. So I think they, that, that has, you know, that should be relooked at as well. So. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for having me.
Just a question to Stephen and Rob.
Okay.
The, the lady's comments on the owner's willingness to develop, we noted that, I assume.
Yeah, we can crosswalk that. I thought we had all owner interest letters lined up. And of course, anytime there's been an owner interest letter, I think it's on the tier one site, so we could just make sure. I know there's some differentiated ownership there, as Sarah mentioned, between the City Forest and the others. I thought we caught them all. But I think our intent is to catch the batch of those properties up there. If there's some cleanup on catching one property we missed, contiguous ownership, staff would advocate including those. But we'll just have to confer with our staff and Sarah to make sure, see if we missed anything in that corner there.
Thank you. Okay, Andrew, can we have a first online?
Sure. Okay, so we are about to call on our online public speakers. I just, for those that are online, if you would like to speak, I encourage you to raise your virtual hand to help us out. So our first speaker, we have Kelly Snyder.
If you'd like to go ahead. Hi, this is Kelly Snyder. Thank you very much. Very interesting presentation, and I know there's a lot to do. I'm calling specifically to mention that the owners at six hundred East Hamilton, the Fry's, for what you call the Fry's former Fry's site, which is one to your tier one opportunity list, are very interested in redeveloping to housing. But I just want to, I, I hear Mr. Rose and Mr. Eastwood and Jeff Bradley talking about, well, you know, we'll have at least twenty or thirty percent redevelop. And these higher densities, we'll be sure to pencil out. And we're going to have, you know, lots of interest from affordable developers and market rate developers. And, and we're really lining us up for success. That's all probably true. And I know that this is a big leap for the RENA numbers this year from the last seven-year cycle. But if you look at that corner of Hamilton and Salmar, three of your tier one sites are in there. It's the Fry's site, the Staples site, and the contract flooring site. I've heard Mr. Barron from the, from the Staples business talk a lot of times about how he would like to redevelop that site on behalf of Brandenburg. I want to point out that your calculations for just those three sites on one corner come up to almost eight hundred units. That's just those three tier one opportunity sites, eight hundred units. And I just want you to take a moment, all of you and members at home listening, and remember tonight, because in two years, these property owners are going to come back to you and they're going to say, we have a plan to bring seven hundred and eighty-five residential units to this corner, and it's selected in your opportunity site list. And we think that this is going to really work and we can build a pedestrian overpass and all that stuff. I believe that everyone in the city of Campbell would pass out, absolutely have a heart attack if anyone walked up and said, here's seven hundred and fifty units. We want to get these built in the next year or two, so that we would theoretically meet the seven-year deadline. Now, I'm, I'm not trying to say, you know, you have to plan for ten times more. I just want you to remember that the glib way that you talk about density and more units and development means that these property owners and developers are going to come to you with numbers like seven hundred and ninety units. And I just want to point that out, that there is a lot of, of real yes, and we agree and will help you if you want to hit those numbers. If any of those seven, seven hundred and ninety units didn't, didn't hit the books, that would be almost twenty percent of your five thousand unit goal. Right? So if you're, you're, you want to get to, to five thousand units, you hope you can hit it, you're going to need to say yes to a lot of these units. So I, I just want to point that out and encourage you to think big and think positively, because we're going to need these kinds of positive comments coming from all of you for the next four years, if we're going to get any of these built. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelly.
Next, we have Rajah Palala.
Hi, can you folks hear me?
None clear, Rajah.
Okay, thanks. I'm overseas, so just if, if I'm crackling or my voice is not right, please let me know. You know, first, you know, I appreciate the staff for moving so quickly and getting so much done. You know, if, six months, a lot, a lot has been done, so thanks to the staff. I have a quick question. So for all of these sites, right now, they are zoned in, about most of the sites, they are zoned in a different way than what we are looking for to develop in those. So will the rezoning happen as part of the, you know, the general plan that's coming? I know this is the housing element, which is not part of the general plan update. So will that be, the rezoning be part of the general plan? And also, if we are going to rezone, will only these properties be rezoned to this? Or, you know, the properties along the corridors will also be rezoned, maybe appropriately? That, I, I just had that question. Thanks.
Thank you. Stephen?
Yeah, I can. That's our objective. To the extent feasible, we'd like to implement as many zoning map amendment changes as possible. There may be some changes, some codes and, and map changes which might follow the general plan and housing element adoption and certification. So we have up to, I believe, a year following the certification of the housing element to fluctuate all of our zoning map amendments and ordinance changes to really get everything locked down. Again, this is going to be a busy year for us, and it's our objective. But things might take a little bit longer. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Rajah.
Next, Dennis Randall.
Hello?
Hello, Dennis.
Can you hear, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Well, thank you. I'll just echo my compliments to this process. It's the most cogent process I've seen in thirty years. I represent the corner of the ownership that owns the Hickory Pet, the Shell Station, and the Montebello Market and ancillary buildings. And I'm not quite sure, I, 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 I got cut off, and I'm not quite sure if the purple color is tier one or tier two. I can't quite tell. Can someone tell me?
I think that's tier one, it's just the density, isn't it?
Yes. Okay, well, I see black, and that was referred to as tier one, and then I see purple, and I wasn't sure that was also tier one or not.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, Kelly made a very good point. And, you know, if you look at these larger sites that are located to, or near and around Prune Yard or downtown and the, and the train stations. As I see this, those sites, these sites are really mixed-use sites. And offer an extraordinary opportunity to develop varied and unique properties that will promote walkability from a much larger area around what I call the core square of, starting from the south, Campbell to Bascom, Bascom to Hamilton, and Hamilton to whichever, whichever street you want to connect back to downtown. That loop is really a core commercial element of the city. In our proposal, and I, I, I sent it to, I sent an email to Rob Eastwood yesterday and had some communications with him earlier today, where I forwarded our development proposal for a mixed-use project at the location of East Campbell and South Bascom, including a hundred and seventy-room, four-star hotel and two hundred and eleven units of market rent housing with below-grade parking and rooftop housing and beautiful artistic, you know, executions. And, and all of this speaks to quality. You're talking about math, I get it. But at some point in time, what, what you, what gets lost in the translation is that density provides public space because you're, you're building higher, you're getting more, more units in on the available parking, you're getting, you're getting public space, you're getting amenities on rooftops, you're getting artistic works that might pierce the seventy-five-foot height limit. There are a lot of things that can be added into this where you can develop top world-class level housing with density. So I just want everybody to hear that. And I just, again, appreciate everything you're doing and, and I'm a big, big fan of this process. Thank you.
Great comments, Dennis. I think we heard something similar from, on a previous meeting from a, from a developer in San Jose, so point well made. Thank you.
Next, we have Kevin Crewell.
Thanks, can you hear me as well?
Yep.
Great. Kevin Crewell, fifty-nine Kennedy Avenue, also the vice president of our HOA for the Cottage Place Development here. Couple of questions, one, very basic one, I'm sorry to ask this question, but the residential unit, what is the definition of that? Is it a, is it a single bedroom per, or, you know, because you have multiple options in terms of number of bedrooms, you know? How do you, how is it defined?
It's a good question. It's really governed by a kitchen, the presence of a kitchen. So you might have a three-bedroom, two-bedroom studio, et cetera. But if there's a single kitchen within a household, it will constitute a unit.
Okay, so there could be a variable number of bedrooms per kitchen, so that it would affect the density as well?
The number of bedrooms does not affect the density.
It does physically in terms of how many, how much space it takes up.
That's what they relate to mass and bulk.
Right. Yeah, and I just, okay, so interested in this process, I'm, I, I have to say, I moved here a little over six years, about six years ago. I'm a little concerned about losing some of the character of Campbell if the developments go too high. Places like the Fry's building in that corner is a good location for development because it's pretty isolated from the rest of the community. But I, I do want to express a little bit of concern over developments going too high and, and sort of blocking out some of the, the view and, and as well as changing the character of the community, which is, you know, mostly housing in the one-to-three-story, with occasional four-story complexes. So one other, just a quick observation, I think the, the Corporate Technology Park, adding a flyover walkway to the, to the Corporate Yard would actually really improve the appeal of that, the Corporate Park, Technology Park for easy access to downtown. So I think they consider that in your plan.
Next, we have Tim Pasquinelli.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I own the Campbell Technology Park and I've been participating in these meetings in person. Sorry, I'm not there tonight. One question I have is, why is Campbell Tech Park listed differently on these plans than all these other sites? I see that we're listed sort of with the city sites, I'm just curious as to why that might be.
Rob, Steve, you have a comment?
Yeah, I have to answer it, and just kind of, I was just going to suggest to the commission, as you get comments, I was, I was going to wait until all the comments come in. Staff serves the pleasure of the commission and then answer the commission rather than have staff go back and forth with public speakers, if that's okay with you. But to answer Tim's question, so as, as mentioned, we did consider, it wasn't originally identified by us as a housing site. I know Mr. Pasquinelli has come in and indicated interest to be in housing. I think it's unique for two points. One, it does have an existing city agreement that commits it to a non-housing use for the next eight years, so we'd have to consider breaking that, for lack of a better term. And two, you know, we would like to discuss the opportunity for a land swap or the opportunity to put the corporate yard there. So based on those considerations, we wanted to flag that. We, we do think it's a good opportunity for housing, but with those considerations. And there are some access issues I think we needed to talk about a little bit more with the tech part. It's a lot of housing in an area that doesn't have good access. So, so to say the short, we want to continue to go forward, but there are some considerations about the, the property. For those reasons, we want to make sure the commission and council is aware of and can continue to discuss.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
So we do not have any more hands raised online, but I do believe that we have one more speaker here in the audience. And we'll just give him a moment, he's completing a speaker card. And then I, I just want to add, if there is anybody online that would like to comment, so please raise your virtual hand. Thank you.
Rick Ortega.
Rick Ortega, the property owner at sixty-eight South Third Street and Seventy, South Third Street. And what I'm requesting is a mixed occupancy.
Mixed use. Mixed use. Kind of zoning changes in between, you know, like to add a buffer, more of a buffer between downtown and residential?
I've owned the property and I live at sixty-eight South Third Street since nineteen eighty-four. And at the time, that was my insurance office. And I had the business license and it was okay to have my business there with the exception of not having a sign out front, which was fine because our business has been first established in nineteen forty-eight. Desiree's the fourth generation of the business. I'm seventy-two years old. My wife has Alzheimer's and by doing this mixed occupancy or whatever you call it, we would have the office at Seventy, South Third Street, which is the back house. Where she would be there, I'd be working a couple of hours with her just to stay busy, but my wife falls and so forth. And basically, I'm looking to move our current office to Seventy, and she would be there in case I'm not around. If something happens to my wife, she falls. Desiree is there. And again, I've owned the property since eighty-four. Probably a lot.
Yeah. We ran a business there for thirty years. There wasn't any complaints of traffic or, you know, there's not going to be additional parking concerns or impact to street parking or anything like that. We have a parking lot in between the two units. And the properties that are directly behind on Second Street are also mixed-use, so it'd kind of just be like extending the logical border for mixed-use to Third Street.
Rick Barry has his.
Robert Barry.
Robert Barry has his recording studio right behind us.
And then Javier is.
And then Harvey Air is right behind me. And Robert Barry, excuse me, also owns the house to the left of me. And they all don't have a problem if I'm able to do this and neighbor to the right of me, which is right on the corner of Third and Campbell here, has no problem. Going all the way back to First Street, you know, you've got your house and then next to that, they have a business unit in the back. So, you know, going down the line, everybody has a business, so that's what I'm requesting.
Right. Thank you very much. And just to be clear, your request is to change the mixed occupancy to Seventy, Seventy South Third Street. Well, is it the moment, but that's the request?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Time is, yes.
We know that we're coming in kind of at the end of your guys' process. You guys have been working on this for a long time, so I appreciate you letting us interrupt. But the back unit does need to be updated, so it would be in the city, you know, aligned with the city's plan to have attractive businesses and residences around that around downtown and it would be AD compliant, of course, and so much more aesthetically pleasing than it is right now.
And in terms of additional traffic, most of this, ninety-nine percent is done.
Through Zoom right now.
Thank you. What I'd ask is.
There's going to be a major increase of any kind of traffic.
So I'll ask the staff to follow up with you on this, but appreciate you bringing it to our attention. Yeah, that would be great if you could. Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
What kind of timeframe would we be looking at here?
I think that's going to be a point to discuss with staff on there. As it's a new item, effectively, we'd need to consider it. All the staff would need to consider it, but I'm sure they'll follow up with you. They appreciate the urgency.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just going to know we can get their information, follow up with them. Any options, next steps, yes.
Any more questions online, Andrea?
I do not see anybody else online that would like to speak.
Okay, thank you. At which point I'll close the public comment. As we're about to go into the discussion with the commissioners, do you want to take a swift break?
Before we start talking about what we've talked about. We didn't talk about the, one of the other things on this was to talk about mixed use. And we haven't really gone over that. I was wondering if we're going to reopen to go over the mixed-use question that you wanted answered tonight.
Yeah, that'll be the second discussion. This one's just in the tier-one states going forward, and then we'll have a pause and then we'll come back on mixed use.
I can start. So.
Before we do that, did we want to take a small break? Okay, let's time. Shall we continue at five past? Especially for the viewers online who aren't enjoying the cookies. Right. Thank you. So we're now going to the discussion phase. So this is really, the first part, as Director Eastwood said, is going to be on the selection of the sites. I don't know, suggestions on how we should go through this? There's about six site clusters. Do we want to go through each cluster, get opinions, and then move on? Is any suggestions on how we'd like to do this?
I think one page at a time works. If we can have staff put up one page and we'll have our opinions about it and move to the next page.
No. Sounds good. Okay, so this is sheet one, isn't it? Yeah, on a packet. Okay, so what I suggest, because we've got, we've got six, and we, let's start in order. Commissioner, is this a, if you're ready, do you want to lead with the cover?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, you know, in general, first of all, I just, I like the way you went about the ratings. The rating process was good. And to narrow it down, put it into tier one, tier two. On this particular area, you know, I actually don't have, I mean, there's a couple of areas, a couple of things where I'm a little disappointed, you know, just that it didn't work out with all the gray, some of the grays on Winchester and in the cluster over by Gilman and Railway, whatever it is, the Gilman Railway area. It's a little disappointing that some of that didn't survive. But otherwise, I don't have any particular comments on this area in general. I think, I think the densities make sense and and the parcels make sense. And the way you've rated them makes sense. So I don't really have any thoughts on this particular map.
Thank you.
Tier two will still be afforded an adjustment to the plan?
Yeah, I mean, just a clarification. So I'll talk, I know we talked about this part. I'll look for Stephen to acknowledge. So just because they're not housing opportunity sites does not mean they cannot develop for housing. My understanding, a lot of these sites, the Winchester Boulevard, and especially those downtown areas have zoning that allows housing, number one. And number two, there's the adjustment that's going to be made in the general plan because of the net gross calculation, that the densities in all these areas will go up a little bit. So, so again, if they're not, if they don't meet the list, we're not saying you can't do housing on the site. We're just picking the ones that we're moving forward. I'll just say for HCD to certify with us definitely are going to be targeted for housing, but doesn't rule them out to develop for housing. I hope that makes sense.
I gather as much and understand that. Thank you. I guess my concern would be that the clusters along Gilman and Dillon and Railway are, if they were all one parcel, they would most likely meet the tier one, but we're counting out someone assembling all those pieces like the Cressley Home Development. So I think we're missing an opportunity on those sites and they should be reconsidered. And then I guess I can understand that we are reaching our numbers so they could just develop as standard housing or get a PD and redo, you know, add density through a PD. The next comment is about the Corporation Yard. Love the idea that it can be relocated. I mean, I guess my opinion doesn't necessarily matter in this situation, but I think we'd be, look, we'd be not taking advantage of the Technology Park if we put the Corporation Yard in the Technology Park. Maybe it's a phased thing, but then we're moving the Corporation Yard multiple times for no reason. So I would, you know, if I had the opportunity, I'd move the Corporation Yard, maybe still in McGlinsey, in the industrial district, but not replace Opportunity Land. So I think the Technology Park should retain it. Well, if the developer or the owner wants to develop it, I mean, if there's some other discussion and they're just not going to develop that three-acre portion, but I feel like that large element of land, you don't get any of those in Campbell anymore. So it shouldn't be switched into a Corporation Yard unless there's other parameters or reasoning. But love both of those sites, Corporation Yard and Technology Park as tier one and definitely hope to see them developed.
Thank you, Commissioner Crewe.
Yeah, just wasn't sure the process where we're going, but this is just for purposes of the EIA. I mean, when we're saying seventy-five units per acre, are we committing ourselves to seventy-five units per acre on a specific, on each specific site, et cetera? I know, I don't want to get too controversial. We know we have the height limit of seventy-five feet. Is that, was that a the length, is that strict?
Yeah, that was a voter-approved initiative. I mean, there may be opportunities to go above that with concessions for like a density bonus or something like that, but otherwise, yeah, it can't be exceeded without going back to the voters.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel here. I'm just thinking a lot, you know, the VTA has. The VTA has, for example, I said on their site that they're, they're interested in 75 to 100 units per acre. And I know that the Frye's site and the Bandenberg, the Staples site have also said higher units than I, I heard what, you know, Ms. Snyder said about the, all the units, et cetera, et cetera. So I know there's a lot of issues here, but we're just trying to get the EIR going and kind of identify the sites. So. In that, in that respect, yeah, I love, I think the Corporation Yard with the Technology Centre, I, you know, all in favour of that from day one, I know it's tremendously complex. Sure seems like a win-win if it, if it works out. I wasn't sure about Mr. Pasquale Nellie's concerns there about being separated out. It's obviously a much more complex and, and touchy and tricky situation, but that would certainly be a plus. And what a great plus that would be, it'd make everything so much easier. But I think all the sites are, are good on this, on this map, just to get off the dime here. That's fine with the higher densities on, on all those sites down there and, and the Corporation Yard, looking at that. And then looking at the, at the parking structure as well, all plus. So I'm all in favour of this map. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kimko.
Thank you, Chair. So combining Corporation Yard with Technology, you know, Park, I think that's a great idea. I know when I try to fit number of units in a particular property for clients. The more options you have, the more leeway you have is better. And so having Corporation Yard, joint technology park, I think gives options to both. For, for both purposes, you know, and so I, so I'm definitely for it. The other issue is, it's not just space, it's of course transportation, how do you get people to these sites? And in addition to that, it's the utilities, you know, are the utilities, you know, utilities that to serve these sites, you know. What does it take to take the water line, the gas line, the electricity, you know. The sanitary sewer lines to these places to be able to serve. And so again, the more mixed use, I think we have, the more mixed. Yeah, I think it gives us more options and I think it's the, is, is good planning. So thank you. Oh, and now on this page and also on other pages, you know, going back to question I asked from Stephen as to the densities. Can we change the title to maximum density rather than just density right at the bottom of it, just so it's a little bit more clear? I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lester.
Thank you. I totally understand that the north part of Winchester is going to be, if it's high density residential. It's going to be 45 units an acre based on the general plan update. So totally understand that. I'm very happy to see that the sites around Winchester Station are at 75. I am in favour of moving the cop yard and developing the tech park. I think if we can get a pedestrian flyover, I know that's expensive, but if we can get that, we could go higher than 30 an acre on tech part, especially on the highway side. And because, as a general rule, I think because after we start the EIR process, we can go smaller, but we cannot go larger. But we should be liberal in what we allow because something might go wrong, something might fall through. And we can always get smaller, but we cannot get larger after this point. That in mind, like I understand that there's a, a, it is unlikely that the. Dillon-Gilman Railway section is going to get built, especially in current conditions. But if we, we don't, we can upzone it, I think, to 75 an acre without including in our site inventory. I just, like, that, that is right next to our light rail station and whatever we can do to encourage development there, I'd like to.
Those are my thoughts. Thank you. Just wanted to point, sorry, in, in point, I just want to reemphasise, so that. Once we start the EIR, the opportunities to change, to go up will close. So I mean, to, to answer your question, Commissioner Bookbinder. If the city was to contemplate upzoning, irrespective of the housing element of those sites, we'd, we'd have to decide that now. You can say, hey, we'll think about that later because the EIR would have to evaluate that. So I think this is something the commission would like to recommend, they can, but I want to make clear. But you don't have the idea that you could come back in five months and say, oh, we'd, we'd like to upzone those sites later. Because it would miss the EIR threshold that starts at the end of this month.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a clarification question for City Attorney, if I may. Bill, you mentioned the 75 feet is a voter approved measure. And then you, you said there may be, if there's a housing bonus, that could override the 75 feet?
Yeah, state law provides under the density bonus law that you not only get an increased density for providing affordable housing. But you're also entitled to certain concessions, a certain number of concessions. And one of those could conceivably be an increase in height.
And that wouldn't need going back to the voters for that?
That would likely not need going back to the voters, correct?
Thank you. So just my comments, I echo my fellow commissioners' comments here. I think these are good choices. And I know this is going to come on the mixed use side of this meeting. Where we have areas such as a Campbell Technology Park and maybe Frye's, and where we have these contiguous areas. I'd be really in favour of mandating mixed use. And the reason I say this, and maybe it's out of place to mention it here, we have a housing crisis, but we also have a crisis on providing services. From child to adult services for, for daycare through to adult care. And I think when we think about mixed use, we think about retail and cafes and restaurants. I think it's also on us on us to think about, you know. Locations that allow affordable services to, especially to, 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 for childcare, for adult care, special needs, those types of things. Because they're very price sensitive and they're very, very short in the whole of the Bay Area. So I just wanted to get that point in. So please, yeah.
I, I didn't realise, I, I kind of ignored the fact that the Campbell Technology Park was on this map, even though I had a lot of comments about it. So I just want to, you know, I have mixed feelings about including Corporation Yard there. I could envision. Like the southern section of the yard that butts up against the Christish Lane access being the Corporation Yard. I have, I have concerns about putting Corporation Yard that where there's, it's next to a city park. And is next to a big residential area, just feels uncomfortable, right? So, but I guess, you know, if you put it on one corner and the only egress in it. To the Corporation Yard, to and from the Corporation Yard was Christage Lane, that would make some reasonable sense. I've been down Christage Lane, by the way. It's a horrible, horrible road. So there would need to be improvements on, on that road, even just for, just for the Corporation Yard traffic. It's, it's essentially an alley. So, so with that said, it's like, I'm not enthusiastic about the idea of a Corporation Yard there. But I guess I could envision, you know, it, it being in one section there where not having them going through the Technology Park, Parkway. Where the residents would go, but being able to get in and out through the south, the south border. So that said, that's just my kind of personal view of that. Otherwise, as far as upping that density, you know, I was worried. Mostly because Commissioner Rivlin mentioned a thousand people, a thousand units there the last day, he goes like, oh, my God. So I, I think we have to be careful because of, of the traffic issue as to how many people are going to live in that area. There probably can be a traffic study if we wanted to really boost that density. So I was happy to see that was like at 30 and that maybe basically be, I think 500 units is probably, just a gut feeling is that's kind of the max. You got whatever that would come out in terms of, of people and cars and stuff. It's like getting in and out of there has been expressed and I have a little concern about, not terrible amount of concern. But I think if it was doubled in size, I'd have more concern about the traffic in and out of there. So I'm comfortable with the 30 units. I think the, the 500 unit number is, that's a lot of units. You know, that's, that's a big development. And so anything bigger than that, I start to have more concern about.
Can I just, to what Chair Ching mentioned? I don't know exactly, I think this might be more of a general plan thing, but if we're concerned about being able to fit care services in. We could do an overlay or change the allowable uses to allow small scale daycares and care services and otherwise residential areas. And, and sort of make that a lot more feasible if we want to provide more room for that in general.
Thank you. Director Eastwood, is that okay for the first one?
Absolutely.
Okay, let's move to the second one if we may. And I'll, I'll start at the other end to mix it up a bit. Commissioner Cray, are you ready for any comments, observations?
Right, you know, I, I'm just, this is the, this is the busy one here, the busy map. The other site, you know, I think the sites are all good. I, I. I guess I'm still a little confused about what we need to designate before the EIR. You know, the Frye's site, you know, would be a site where, I mean, it's so big. And what, you know, density bonus, if it goes above 75 feet, if we get a lot of BMR units, I think that that's, you know, kind of a trade off. But I know we're not trying to get into that detail. And then the Staples and the, and the other site also developed a max, you know, and we're talking about. Another traffic, another major traffic kind of situation. Oh, I'm talking about, you know, 202 and 202.2 and 202.1. And then the Staples site, 35, so. But I know, yeah, and it's the highest that we have right now, 75, so that's definitely a 75er for those guys. And 159 is good and I, I think all these sites are good, I believe in most of them. And, you know. We got the light rail station there, a couple of light rail stations on this map actually, so. It's a little too bad, I know the reasons because we went over it while there weren't more sites closer to that downtown light rail. But we've got a few there and I think we've got a pretty nice downtown going there. So anyway, I thought this was a good map, I think the sites were all pretty good. And I'm just kind of hesitating in my mind about the, the site by Hamilton and 17. And it's just such a traffic nightmare kind of a situation and I mean, we're not getting into the mixed use question now. But you know, obviously this would be sites that would want to be mixed use, they wouldn't want to be all residential, I would imagine, you know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kimko? Okay, Commissioner, is this?
Yeah, in, in general, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with, with the stipulated here. I mean, the only, the only, the only thing that I have a question about in general, and I don't think it's going to change things, is having two, two high density residentials in Prun Yard. I can envision the one that was going to be an office building, that would be whatever, a five story residential. Probably mixed use on, on Campbell, the 1.2. I'm not convinced of putting a second high density residential. I go to Prun Yard now and man, it's a busy, busy place. And there's, it, it, it starts to make me think that it would be like a little bit crazy. With so much with having both, having two high density residential in Prun Yard. But I just want to get that on the record, I guess. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Similar vein, I don't, I don't, I'm not bothered by the amount of people or users or residents. It might be a little tricky with the car traffic. I think it's already a little bit awkward to get in and park there, but there are parking garages. I think it could be designed correctly. And I think there's actually a third, if you consider the, what is a Bank of America on the corner, number 17. But I did hear the Publix comments on the south of the city flower space of my computer. And then the opportunities to develop Hickory Pit Corner there at Campbell and Bascom. I think those are both appropriate and I'm glad to see them in there. And then everything here seems great. I know we already talked about the south of East Campbell on the other map. Would love to see, yeah, access or access to high density closer to the Campbell Light Rail Station. And hopefully, there's a way to, see, I guess here, I'll, let me start. If, if this is our opportunity to get the density up, just because there's a parcel line dividing property at east, south of East Campbell. I feel like if, if the density's increased, people will sell their property to a developer. Or developers will come and assemble the land. So I, I, I feel strongly in line with Commissioner Bookbinder that the properties south of East Campbell. Should be included in tier one sites and unless there's another reason they're excluded, I, I think we're missing that opportunity. I know this was on the last map. I apologize for bringing it back up.
That's good.
Adam? I, I was going to say, I still have feelings about Gilman-Dillon Railway. Thank you, Commissioner Rivlin. I believe the southwest corner of Bascom and Hamilton should be up to 75 an acre because it's not residential adjacent. Walkable to Hamilton Station, same with site 17, same with the Hickory Pit site. Especially since we have staff put together that really excellent analysis showing that even at 75 units an acre. It's unlikely for sites to actually go above our, our height limit. And additionally, that we can put together differing incentives so that developers will want to have, fit more units into 75 feet. Rather than take the density bonus and go above 75 feet. And I'm very excited about hopefully seeing the old Elephant Bar, Site 159 be redeveloped. I used to live up in the Franciscan some years ago and I remember that being empty and getting worse and eventually burning down. And like, I just, I really hope that it turns into something nice.
Yes, thank you. My, my comments pick up on something Commissioner Cray was talking about on the density on 202 and dot one and dot two, the Frye's area. And I think, I think as Kelly mentioned this, I'd actually welcome the high density development to the, to the maximum. On the proviso, the developers also invest in the infrastructure that makes it supportable, right? So that's the transport, the pedestrian access, mixed use. So it's not just a case of putting in maximum without investing in the necessary measures to make it not only safe, but enjoyable, right? So you, you know, you can't have both, you can't just have one, right? So I'd be very, very concerned about developer just trying to get a, a fast buck out of this. And probably a bit brutal in my comments, but just trying to maximise, yeah, 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 we've got very high density. Let's try and spin this for the maximum number of dollars. I think we should be very concerned with that. You know, it has to be a good quality development, which I'm sure the intent of that developer and the, the public comment was to, to that point. Picking up on Commissioner's, this is point on the Prun Yard, yeah, I share the same concerns. The Prun Yard is massively busy in principle. I don't, I don't have an issue with the density. But again, you know, is it actually workable? I think if we were going to have that type of density, again, it needs investment in infrastructure. Not just put in a building with 75 units per acre and then the residents and the people in there and the people who use it then have to live with the consequences on it. So is that?
Can I, I just have one, yeah, comment. So on, on the Prun Yard, just in terms of like for cars, the Prun Yard is incredibly busy. Like if you go there by car, it is a pain to park, it is absolutely stuffed. If you go there on foot. If you go there on foot, um, I'm within walking distance, if you go there on foot, it is the right amount of busy. So I, I think that, you know, the Prun Yard does not work at this density as a place that you have to drive to. It's kind of unpleasant to do that, but it works great as a place you walk to. So if we want to make this place more pedestrianized, it may not be as comfortable to drive to and it may seem too dense if you're trying to find a parking space, but I think it's fine if you're walking to it or even biking.
Can I add that? Thank you for bringing that up. You make a great point. If you're living there, which is what's on the table here, then you are walking there, which means there, while you own a car in this environment, hopefully you're not driving and you're eating and dining and living in this space. So thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, a column out of context, um, just picking up on your pedestrian-friendly area. Uh, I, I said, I, I use it a lot, walking to it is not that safe. Right? Um, just the locations of the signs near the sidewalk. Cars shoot out of the, uh, out of the car park to go into the road. And because of the location of the signs, they can't see pedestrians, there's a blind spot. Uh, and it's not laid out, right? It's, it's, the layout is twenty years old. So if we're going to increase the number of people there, I think that's, that's to the point of, we need to think of this holistically about how increased number of people affect our safety and just equality of life, right? So again, it's not in principle, it's how it's implemented, I think.
Yeah, to- totally agree. There's, um, if you cross from Union, there is a sidewalk to nowhere that just ends and then you go across traffic. There, there's all sorts of things like that. I think it was intended to be decorative, but I definitely, if we're putting a lot more pedestrians in there, I would definitely want to see pedestrian circulation improvements and a lot better pedestrian safety and do whatever we can to slow down cars going through that area.
Yeah, because I think the developers were, uh, uh, appeared about this time last year. Um, and they were talking about the redevelopment, um, and the island in the center. Uh, they were, they wanted to book some kids', kids' play area or more gorillas or monkeys or what you call them, right? That's only going to exacerbate the situation that you're going to have more kids. So again, it's just coming down to, it has to be planned really well. Anyway, um,
Yeah, I, I, I think that the, the, the vision of an idea of more walkability and everything is a nice thing, but, you know, pragmatic, I'm more of a pragmatic person. And, you know, I've been, I, I've been in the area and seen the Prun Yard evolve over the years since it was almost built. But the, the, the fact is, is that it's a destination. It's not a destination for people that live within a half a mile. It's a destination for people who live within five miles. Uh, people come from San Jose, people come, come from the, the west side of Campbell, they drive. You know, they can't get there by walking. So it, it, you know, and the people that are, would be residents there will probably be, there'll probably be a, a market rate. Uh, this, it will probably be market rate and people will be, uh, pre- pretty well off and will want to have their cars. So, I mean, the pragmatic thing is that in the near term, you're just going to have a traffic, uh, issue with, with, with the Prun Yard. And I don't see it evolving very quickly. Uh, um, so I just think, you know, you have to take that into consideration. I mean, I have, my son lives in South San Jose and he comes to the Prun Yard almost, almost every weekend with his kids. So, um, it, it's, and I live, I don't, I don't walk, I go shop at the Trader Joe's and I live, you know, uh, near Winchester and Campbell and I'm, I don't, I have to drive my car there to get my groceries. So, you know, pragmatically, I mean, it's great if, if, if Campbell becomes more a walkable community, but it's, it's really, I don't think in the cards in, in, in the next, you know, two decades, okay? No matter what, what they put in in terms of pods or, or shared cars or whatever. Uh, and so we have to, we have to think about that from a, from a real, realistic point of view.
Yeah, I'd probably beg to differ. I, I have a, I, I, I have a very different view on that and it's probably out of context here that we need to, I, I think that's the wrong view moving forward, right? If we just carry on saying we need cars, if people want to pay, pay a parking fee there, right? You have to get carrot and stick because things won't change, right? We'll carry on using cars, we've got climate change, right? Um, whether you believe it or not, so anyway, that's, that's, sorry. Thank you for your comment, but, um, I don't want to get started on that. Uh, can we get, move to slide three, please? And Commissioner Zissou, since you're doing so well, last time, do you want to, uh, if you're ready, comment? I was going to say, you look facing.
Um, I, I guess it's mostly about what's over, uh,
On the?
On the, uh, on, uh, west of, uh, west of the, uh, the Frye's area. Um, again, I, I don't, I don't have any problems with, uh, uh, you know, what, what we've done here. The, uh, I, I'm a, I'm a big fan of number fifty-six being redeveloped, but other than that, other than that, uh, because I'd love to see that be done, but, uh, I'm good with this map.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm also good with this map. At one point, there was a question if home church was available. Did, did we confirm that that's something that owners wanted to do?
Go ahead, Stephen. I, I don't, I, I can refer to the table here, just a second, see if we got a property owner interest letter. Um, historically, I mean, a while back, the home church had reached out, contacted staff with an interest in redeveloping. I'm not sure where they are at this moment in time.
Well, I think it's a great site, so keep it in there. Connected to my prior comments about adding viable sites, but I just heard last time there, there may have been a conflict with the owner, but not conflict, that's not the word, but maybe they hadn't thought, uh, through that process, but would love to see it developed. Uh, thank you, this sheet's great.
Thank you, Commissioner Cray.
Uh, yeah, no, I'm good, I'm good with this map, looks good.
Thank you, Commissioner Kimko and Wester.
Um, I realize I keep coming back to the same region, but I hadn't mentioned, noticed this before. Um, the north side of Campbell, east of downtown, um, I recognize there's a concern about heights there because it backs up on two single-family areas. And I, I understand that we don't want to, how can I put this? We don't want to displease the people who, who live there, but at the same time, that's really right next to our rail station. And if we can do, if the height is the issue, we can do something to change the height or, or limit the height and do something denser than forty-five units an acre, which is kind of the, the baseline, not very special density. I, I would hope to push that up to at least sixty and try and find some ways to limit the height in some other way. And, uh, if that's infeasible, we don't have to submit it, uh, in the housing element of that density.
Thank you, excuse me, thank you. Um, I just concur with, uh, my fellow commissioners' comments, um, so I don't have anything to add.
I'm sorry, uh, I forgot, on this one, that stacks at the, at the bottom there, right? Is that stacks?
Um, one thirty-nine is stacked.
Yeah, so, so what's the, what's the thinking? I mean, it already has residential units, is somebody suggesting that they're going to build additional units onto that building?
Uh, as a matter of fact, we just received a pre-application today, um, for that particular site with the idea that the, uh, building there in the corner would be demolished and be building a new housing project in its place. So the idea would be that that whole building, I think it's like, uh, at the corner would go and that the buildings in the back would remain.
Uh, oh, I didn't know there was two buildings there. So you're saying the one that faces, there's a building that, the, the residential units are over the Stacks Restaurant, right?
That's correct, it is actually a separate part of the building.
And the one that's closer to Winchester, there's a separate section that's office?
That's correct.
Okay, so you're talking about redoing, redoing that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so, sorry, does that mean that the residential units in Stacks are, are not going to be demolished? That we're going to preserve the rental housing there?
I, I haven't had the grants of the pre-application that came in today, but that's my understanding that it's, that the residential units are to be preserved and that, that the, uh, the ground floor, like the office building, all that would, would go, that, that separate building closer to Winchester.
Neat, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, shall we go into sheet four, please?
Yeah, you know, I, I think I've asked this before, but do you know, Stephen, off the top of your head, what the, uh, the Penny Lane, that Penny Lane project was, uh, developed at, uh, in terms of units per acre?
Uh, most of the products were density bonus products, I can only surmise, and it was a twenty-seven eight per gross acre sign. So with the density bonus, probably the thirty to thirty-four range.
Okay, I'm just wondering, because I, I know that, um, number fifty-one, we had a, a workshop. Isn't that the, that's the site where we had the workshop on, uh, already, didn't we? At the American Bar, okay, yeah, that's the bar though. So the developer was here, we talked about that. And, yeah, you know, I think sixty's fine, uh, I don't, but I don't know if we, if we want to go higher there because it's such a good location, but I, what was, what was the developer proposing when he came in? He probably had to go with what we had at the time, right? Twenty-seven units an acre kind of thing?
Yeah, that's correct, so he made, approached the city with a pre-application to request that higher density, the twenty-seven units per acre mixed use council direction would generally bring, the, the, the mix of, this is a, a, a mix of housing development types, which generally, you know, speaking of Penny Lane here for a moment, to the north, you do have this townhouse in the dark, um, three-story. So that's generally lower density component, but you have the condos up in the front. So something similar, that'd be my guess.
Okay, I, I just couldn't remember, because I knew it came up, but yeah, yeah, anyway, yeah, this, this map looks fine, thank you.
Commissioner Kimko? Thank you, Commissioner Zissou?
Looks good on my end, too.
Same with me, thank you. Well, sorry.
No worries, no worries.
How does this you out of?
It's cool. Um, so, um, you're unlikely to have me say this often, but I think it's, it's fine that Site one sixty-two has a lower density of twenty per acre. It is literally surrounded by, um, single-family residential neighborhoods on all, or, well, three sides and a road across which is another residential neighborhood or single-family neighborhood. So I'm, I'm okay with that. I do think that it would be reasonable to up the density of the ones across, um, across from Penny Lane on Hamilton, but not specifically necessary. I think, uh, this is fine.
Thank you, I just echo, um, Vice Chair's comments on one sixty-two. I think twenty is very appropriate, given the, uh, surrounding properties. Um, with that, uh, I think this is slide five, please? I can't remember which end I started, so I think it's you, Commissioner Zissou.
Um, the only question I have on this is, um, the Santa Mas Aquino Plaza. I didn't think to look on the inventory list, but, but are you calculating the number of units based on a portion of that? I mean, you've got the whole plaza covered and you're obviously not going to use all of it. You know, you were going to use a section of it, so, so I, I don't know what the units are on the list, but, uh,
That is a good question. Uh, what did I mention? You remember last time, it was more surgical, it was shown in the back and I think both the commission and council commented probably not the best location of a big surface parking lot. Uh, we have talked to the property owner, they're very interested, uh, two of the property owners have said, hey, you really got our attention with sixty dwelling units per acre, uh, would like to come in and redevelop. Uh, we haven't seen any schematic plans yet, but specific to your question, I'm wondering if Jeff or David can answer on the question of the actual density or Stephen?
Yes, Director, I can. Uh, the whole site is approximately nine point two acres. Our, uh, unit production calculations are based upon using only one point six acres of the site.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I'm supportive of this page. I, I just want to reflect the, the packet that I'm looking at on my screen, doesn't show the gray boxes. So I don't know if my fellow commissioners realize that, but make sure to look on the screen because the screen has a more up-to-date or more, more current view.
Yeah, good, good spell.
Yeah, I was just, uh, yeah, it's good, that's great that the, uh, the, the two oh, two oh seven, uh, property owner wants to develop some of that. I think that would be a good site. And we're pointing out, so, so number twelve, and we talked about that before. So that's the Goodwill store, which is, you know, very popular. Um, and I just assume, I mean, if their property owner is willing to redevelop, hopefully they would find a, a new location for, for the Goodwill store, maybe it would be a mixed-use site, I'm not sure. And I see the reasons why, uh, the, the two properties on the corner are kind of gray, second-tier, uh, not, not big parcels. And I see the reason for, to, to, to include the other ones, the, uh, couple of fast food, uh, uh, location, L and L Hawaiian there and, uh, two sixty-nine or two seventy. So, uh, yeah, that would be, it would be nice, it would give this, uh, uh, area, you know, some of the, uh, take some of the, uh, some of the burden over this area and I think that they'll refine, so, thank you. Thank you.
Just want to confirm something, two oh seven has the dollar store in there or dollar? No, I think it has the dollar at the very back of the site.
Yeah.
The Santa's grocery, yeah, outlets and school, those, those tenants.
I see, I see, okay, thank you.
Um, I do not have anything to add.
Neither do I, thank you, and I think this is the final one. Okay. Commissioner Cray?
I have one, I have a few sites here, and I think there's no work on, I said, I know we had one property, I'd speak, uh, at most of our meetings, so good.
Well, as we've talked before on this, it's like it's, uh, it's pretty, it's pretty limited, but, um, uh, you know, we can do what we can do. And so, uh, you know, I'm fine with what you got there.
Thank you. No comment. I have nothing to add for myself either. So I believe that finishes the.
Oh, I keep, I'm missing you, I don't.
Don't worry, I'll just try and do that.
The cookies.
I did, I did.
You're never going to get any cookies from you again, are you?
Oh, I wouldn't go that far. So, um, I, I, I understand that the reason why we don't have very much in this section of town is because from an AFFH perspective, it is the desert devoid of parks, schools, transit and, uh, shopping. Um, I wish we could fix that. The place could use more services, uh, but generally speaking, I think, uh, this map is good. I think this, uh, this part of town will be, this will be a good part of a city for SB ten programs, um, if we, uh, manage to implement those.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to the end, um, of the housing sites. Um, Director Eastwood, have, have you proposed to, uh, have you got a presentation for the principles?
We do, yeah, congratulations on getting through that part. Uh, the last part is to go through just two things. One is the mixed-use discussion and then we had a report back on, uh, some density height, uh, concerns that came up at the council. We can report back to you, too, and Stephen Rose will take this part of the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, so, great job getting through all those. And so in, in addition to helping us finalize these housing opportunity sites, one thing that we're asking the planning commission to help us do is to weigh in on a couple of key principles which will help govern which of the housing opportunity sites, uh, should or could be redeveloped as mixed use. And as a secondary point, um, whether that, that mixed-use legislation should be applied as a mandate or it should be an option for developer understanding it can, it's only make challenges for redevelopment of a site. Um, in the report, we outlined four key principles, which you see here on the screen. Um, generally, I'll, I'll cover each in turn, but in general, density, the sites which were higher, had a higher, uh, density of the legislation, we're suggesting those potential sites, larger properties, um, pedestrian-related sites. Larger properties, pedestrian-oriented sites, and sites which could potentially help us offset loss in service or identify, help us to manage service where it presently isn't one. So a good example of a, of a density site would be the Prune Yard. So it's being proposed at 75, except for, of course, the Bank of America building there on the corner. And because you have this very dense land use designation already, we're thinking that that might be a great site. Additionally, larger sites, such as the Fry's Electronics. There's a few reasons, I mean, not, not to say any of these are mutually exclusive. A site like Fry's, they found there more than one category, but it's just another, just a simple example of the principle at play. Beyond that, pedestrian-oriented sites. So what's shown here on the screen is that one of properties between East Campbell Avenue, the downtown, and the Prune Yard. And finally, sites which could use that service. I think just a moment ago, Vice Chair Buckbinder had mentioned that it'd be great if we helped address some areas of our city, such as pockets of the Santa Moss area neighborhood, by providing services where there are not any such opportunities. The milk farm dairy would be such an example of a site. So separate from the mixed-use principles, the city council identified concerns about this unintended consequences concept, something that if, as we raise our densities, what would be the likelihood of those densities resulting in building heights exceeding the voter initiative approved height limit of 75 feet? So as an exercise, staff, we took a look at 100% affordable housing projects in San Mateo and Santa Clara County. And we created kind of like a calculator, which provides this kind, it's a little bit complicated. It provides a relationship between density with assumed assumptions on maximum lot coverage, average unit sizes, and building footprints, which kind of comes up to the table here, which is really summarized to say, even at the highest density that we're contemplating at 75 units to the acre, with assuming that we have an 80% density bonus on top of that, our calculations are coming, coming under the 75-foot height limit. It comes up to about 61 point, 61 feet and change. Now, this isn't to say, I mean, you might add an additional 10 feet if it was, say, a mixed-use project. But the point being that we are trying to get across here is that even at these higher densities, we think that it's reasonable to conclude that the height isn't as much of a concern as maybe we had initially presumed with these, with these assumptions in mind, lot size, or lot size, lot coverage, and unit size. This is just one example. We provided a whole exhibit as an attachment to the report, just providing these, these case studies. This is a case study from Foster City. It's a senior housing project with an average unit size of 588 square feet. This particular product had a density of 127 units to the acre, and it came in at a height of four stories or 60 feet. So it's these kind of examples that we, which we drew upon in creating that, that table you saw a moment ago. So with that, we'll turn it back to the commission to discuss both the mixed-use principles, which will help us identify which of the housing opportunity sites should be mixed-use, and whether or not that should apply as a mandatory criteria. And just, we're mostly returning to council with feedback on that height, but we'd be happy to take your feedback on that as well.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. Just a point procedure. Shall I open, after we've asked questions, shall I open it up to public comment after?
It's up to the chair. You've taken public comment, but if you want to open it again, it's to your discretion.
Okay, thank you. Questions, Commissioners?
Thank you, Chair. So, thank you for that example that you brought, Stephen. The average unit that you quoted on, in that example, was 588, I guess? For the five?
That's correct.
588.
588.
So, to me, Campbell is a place for families, you know. I mean, 588, you probably get one bedroom out of it, one good-sized bedroom. You know, it's probably too small for a two-bedroom. You know, and so, I would like to envision we create bigger units, so families can live there, too, not just profitable single individuals or, you know. So, to me, even though that's perfectly a valid example, I don't want to apply it to Campbell. I think Campbell needs bigger units. If you need bigger units in order to fit the same number of, I mean, bigger, yeah, bigger units, the same number of, the same number of units you want to put in there, you have to go taller, because you just can't fit as many within one level. So, you know, I know Commissioner Switzer had asked that question as to, you know, when you say 75 units per acre, how many stories is that, you know? And, you know, of course, it depends on the unit size. Smaller unit size, yes, you can get it in 75 feet, but big units, and so, I just want to express my view that one of the ways to keep the Campbell, the beauty of the Campbell that has created is to make it for families and go for bigger units, you know. So if that means...
Is that, is that a question? Did you have a question?
Well, what the question is, yeah, the question is, is, you know, if, if we go with bigger units, I guess, 75 feet maximum is probably not going to be enough, right? Let's say, let's say you go double, instead of 588, let's say you go for 1,000 square foot average.
And if I can clarify, it is reflected in that, which is important to keep in mind. So, in typical housing development projects, any of them being a good local example here off of LA, it did include a mix of unit sizes, everything from studio, one bedroom, two bedroom, and three. So with an 800 square foot, you could expect to see some three-bedroom family units as a, as a result of that. It's not to say it would be necessarily a cap. So you could have some units coming at 2,400, some units coming at 400 square feet. So as the overall average is about 800, that's really what this table is really helping us illustrate. So you would still see families coming into these projects, even at that 800 square foot average size.
Thank you.
Thank you, please, Commissioner Craig.
Chair, should I, are there questions or discussion?
Just questions at the moment.
Just questions. Let me just ask if, if another way to look at this, so I'm just getting to the actual, specific question of the planning department asking us, which makes sites we want to encourage versus require? It's a little nuanced. And I think in general, anywhere where we have retail now, or commercial, I should say now, we kind of want to encourage mixed-use, I suppose. But where, where we require, so I guess another, another way to look at the question is which of these sites do we need to, are we okay losing as retail or commercial space? I shouldn't say retail, commercial space. Does that kind of go along with that, look at the question?
It is. I mean, there were some assumptions that went into these criteria. Our offer wasn't our intention to change sites which presently are already support mixed-use as part of this effort. So just because it's becoming a housing opportunity site, I guess you could say a, a fifth criteria here is if it's already an existing mixed-use site, it would be our intention to keep that character the same, that that land use designation the same. And then secondly, and also not identified in this, is we have feedback as part of the general plan update, the preferred land use, which I identified areas and locations for mixed-use potential. Those would also be evaluated as part of this. But we're just trying to identify of those housing opportunity sites, which is its own unique list, that Tier 1 list that you saw tonight, of those sites, which of those, and what criteria should we be applying principles in helping us identify? Should they be mixed-use? Should they not be? And should it apply mandatory or not?
Okay. Yeah, well, I'll comment on that when we discuss that. But that was my question, thank you.
Please.
Regarding the mixed-use, and I didn't get a chance to look this up, but I was in the impression the general plan has a mandate mixed-use now. Am I mistaken about that? That, that in, under, in certain locations, you have to have mixed-use?
I'm just hesitating to answer that question. Our residential, commercial, professional office land use designation has an "and/or" statement. Well, actually, it has a slash. Some of the, most of the general plan mixed-use land use designations have slashes. I mean, it's, it's that nuanced, like, the way that we're representing it in the land use designation. It's one thing we hope to clean up and clarify as part of this effort, our housing element general plan. We like to make it abundantly clear whether or not we mean mandatory mixed-use. And even in so doing, what do we mean by that? What percentage of mixed-use? Horizontal is okay, means two separate buildings, so the site contains a mixed-use component. And, and, long story short, I, I wish it was clearer than it is, but it's something, it's a cleanup effort that we're looking to address.
Okay. Yeah, because I, I seem to remember the, the development that's across from Hamilton Plaza on Baskin North of the Prune Yard, you know, the big mixed-use residential. I, I seem to remember somebody saying that that was required to be a mixed-use, which makes sense, because it's on a main corridor in a major commercial area. And to me, that, maybe that should be one of the criteria, is, is that in addition to all this, if it's on a, if it's on a, a major, now, maybe this covers that, but if, if you're on a major corridor where there's commercial, you, you should be having mixed-use. So it's like on Hamilton, that, my favorite place there between First and Third, you put one up there, it should be mixed-use. Now, maybe because it's high-density and it's a large site, it gets, it gets this, this criteria anyway. But that would be my concern in terms of determining criteria. And I'm not sure about mandate. I, I think there's...
Sorry, sorry to be there.
I got my question answered.
Great, great points. We can save those for the... Any, any for the questions? I, I have one. On if, if we were to make things mandatory for, for mixed-use, I assume there would be a mechanism for appeal against that if a developer said, well, it's not appropriate, and they could have a rationale, there'll be a mechanism to take that.
The mechanism would be, in, in this particular case, if we adopt it as part of the general plan as a land use designation, as a mandate, the mechanism would be to propose a general plan amendment. So they have to go through a pre-application request or, it's technically, it's an authorization to proceed with general plan amendment to council, and return back through the process and get that land use designation change reflected, effectively changing from a mandated mixed-use land use designation to a residential, high-density residential, something else, to get away from that requirement.
Thank you. Okay, I propose, since it's been open to the public already, public comment, I propose to take it straight to the commission for discussion. Commissioners Zissa, since you're on a flow with your thoughts, do you want to, to pick up on the principles? Maybe start with?
Yeah, yeah. Just to reiterate, it's, it's like, I want to make sure that, and again, if there's a way to mandate, but also offer a way to appeal and, and, if there's a good reason why it shouldn't. But, but I'd be concerned about having, especially, you know, on, to me, almost everything on the main corridor should be mixed-use. I mean, in general, maybe there's exceptions to the rule, but, but we have an awful lot of these opportunity sites on main corridors. And our main corridors are all commercially covered. And so, it would make sense to me that that should be part of the thinking in terms of coming up with criteria that, that we should be defaulting to mixed-use on, on, on anything that's on the main corridors. That's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Wobbin?
I'm of the same mindset as Commissioner Zissar. Quick question for staff. What's the bare minimum of secondary use that could be in a mixed-use site? A 500-square-foot cafe? Or, like, how would they qualify? Like, couldn't all of these be mixed-use? And if they opt to not build? We're not, we're not seeking commercial in this kind of enterprise here. We're seeking housing. So if we afforded mixed-use to all the sites, what's the disadvantage?
Well, to answer your question broadly, I mean, this is kind of getting at my tortured response earlier about what constitutes, is it mandatory now with this whole slash thing? And to what extent is token mixed-use adequate to satisfy an unclear objective of our general plan? We would hope to, as part of our policy, set development objective standards defined specifically exactly what percentage or what minimum, what minimum amount of mixed-use would be adequate on, as part of that, that update. So that's something we're working on, we plan to work on.
We don't have to determine that or voice that direction here.
No, and I would even allude to, I mean, within the staff report, we had identified that even if we do identify more sites as mixed-use, we can always peel back a little bit, talk about what depth requirements is, you know. Along the downtown, there used to be a policy that the first 50 feet, I mean, of properties had to be commercial, right? To what, that, that first 50 feet to try to create a, a positive pedestrian experience, commercial corridor, that I think went away with our most recent update, which is just getting at pedestrian-oriented uses in general. But I mean, those are, that's an example. You, you have a certain depth requirement, certain percentage requirement. We'll also be identifying, discussing this idea of vertical and horizontal mixed-use, where you might have a separate building that still meets the requirement, even though it's not directly above or below.
Thank you. And sorry if I missed some of that earlier. But yeah, thank you. I, I'm supportive of mixed-use in all corridors and other priority sites, if it makes logistics sense.
I'll just add, I'm sorry to interrupt. And just a little context, because some of this came from our council, and maybe some of our observations. So there was some council discussion, but questions, what are we losing? And that's, and a lot of planners think that way. Hey, mixed-use is great. We're not really losing much. Ground, ground floor commercial is, is a good thing. I think there's two things. One was, one or two council members had observed that we perhaps overbuild a bit mixed-use, and you get a lot of vacancies in these ground floor areas. And I would say, anecdotally, living in San Jose, you actually do see a lot of that. Whereas in Jose, mandates mixed-use, and it sits for years unoccupied. And they end up playing exercise rooms and other things in those spaces, and it might take years to fill. So there's only, it's both ways. I mean, some might say you build it, and then once, at one point, you get to a critical mass, and it's a pedestrian-oriented sort of New York, Parisian atmosphere where people are having ground floor retail that can fill out. But I know a lot, there's a lot of anecdotal evidence that a lot of the mixed-use spaces that have been mandated do stay vacant for many, many, many years. So you have developers coming in saying, why are you mandating it? And then the last point, I think we're getting a little more clarity. We've heard a little bit from HU, and, and maybe Jeff and Stephen can jump in more, that if you're always mandating mixed-use, does that create a barrier to the housing development versus putting just housing in? So there's just some considerations back the other way.
Yeah, I've experienced that or seen that, so, you know, I, but that was to my question of like, how, how much would be required? So like, what is the token, is the word used, Planner Rose? Yeah, we don't want fake mixed-use, but if there was a low minimum, or, yeah, like, a 500-square-foot cafe, that, I don't, would that one unit go unleashed? And it's a blight on the development? I'm not sure. But if we capped it at 30%, if you hit a certain number of units, those would go unleashed, because there's no need for a grocery store in every development or a 7-Eleven in every development. So I, I'm almost of the mind to have these, these tiny mixed-use options with the ability to go bigger.[1722.08] So if the developer sees it and wants to have an urban design that includes bakeries and hair salons and childcare centers, so be it, or, or good for them for thinking outside the box or taking it that direction. But if they're worried, this will impede their ability to sell units. They could just offer the, the, the cookie shop or the one hair salon for the whole development. That, that's me thinking loosely. Hopefully we'll have a deeper dive. But since we're focused on housing here, I think I'm still of the mindset it should be everywhere. Or there might be exceptions, but it should be considered for all sites.
Thank you, thank you. Please, Commissioner.
Good thought by Commissioner Rivlin. But I have to say that what Director Eastwood just said, I was actually thinking the opposite almost. I was almost thinking that the, uh, commercial component of the projects were really what a developer needed to make a mixed use project, especially one that included a good percentage of BMR units pencil out, which is almost going in the opposite direction of what you were, were just saying in a way. And that's why I thought that this question is almost a little moot. Like, because we're talking about encourage or require, or so we're not prohibiting no matter what. And I think in, in, in my mind, and, and, you know, in terms of the Fry's site, probably Staples, Hickory Pit. Uh, you know, most of the big, the big sites, I think would naturally be, you know, would have the commercial component. I, I, I would think, but I'm getting in over my head, you know, I'm not sure. But, um, I, I, I do like the idea of, of the mixed use. I don't, I, I, I love that, I love that we, we look at it, you know, we took out the hundred biggest sales tax providers right from the get-go. That was a good idea. And we don't want to lose that. But I, I, I think we don't want to lose the services that we, that we need, you know, childcare services, et cetera. So I like the mixed use. Certainly makes sense on them. And all those mixed use, uh, sites that we're already talking about on Hamilton, Baskin, Winchester. Keep those, the pedestrian oriented certainly makes sense, uh, the examples that Steve, that Stephen brought up on the, you know, between downtown and Prun Yard, like we required with Chrisley. I mean, that, you know, we definitely want that to be required mixed use. I guess from the, from the, Stephen just brought a few examples. It wasn't the whole universe of, of examples. But the only one that I, I'm just kind of hesitating on is that the Dairy Milk site, which is a real small little service site, uh, over on my neck of the woods in West Campbell. It's, it's real small, but it's, you know, it's been there forever and the neighbors, you know, use it a lot. It's, but if, if the developer, you know, if that's, if requiring a commercial there would stop the, the housing, then I guess I would have a little bit of pause. So, you know, that would be a, a place I wouldn't want to mandate it. I guess I wouldn't, I wouldn't encourage it strongly unless, you know, if, if there's so many neighbors that really need that service, then I would probably change. There's a lot, there's a lot of nuance in this question, but, um, that's kind of where I'm going at. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kenko.
Thank you, Chair Ching. So, um, you know, I actually have an opinion on that too. And, um, I would have to say, um, I agree with Commissioner Rivlin in this case. Now that I don't agree with you, I, I understand it. But, um, because the genius of Silicon Valley is the, you give them room to, um, to, uh, create and give them room to come up with innovative solutions and, you know, to create, you know. And so if we give developers, um, opportunity to just tell them, this is the goal. We're not going to tell you how to do it. You figure out how to do it. Because this is what we like to end up with, you know. So one of the things I had talked about, um, was the idea of convertible space. It's a space that can become commercial when it makes sense to have commercial. And it could be with simple T I, you know, tenant improvement inside, you can turn it into residential when that makes more sense. So if you give developers that opportunity, then they can meet both ways. They can create spaces that can be converted when it makes sense, um, for one way or the other way. And so that's one point I wanted to bring up. That's not for tonight. You have quite a few balls in the air right now. But just as, you know, for future discussion, the second is, when you say commercial, my understanding is, um, developers don't mind like office or professional spaces or dentists or accountants, you know? It's the retail, you know, that gets in the way, you know? It's the, you have to give up the retail space, which is usually have to be at the bottom level. And, you know, they say we love to build commercial, we just, we would love to build residential. We just can't get the retail to rent out. So then it looks like it's an empty building, even though 95% of it is. So, um, so, uh, we need to make a distinction as to when we say commercial, do we mean commercial offices, you know, commercial others versus retail, you know? Because I think, you know, sometimes that can clear up the, um, the distinctions. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't forget you this time. Thank you. So, um, I'm in favor of adding incentives for mixed use development rather than just requiring it out of the gate. Um, I guess it depends on if we think of these places as commercial zones with, uh, optional residential or residential zones with optional commercial. I think that we should be very careful about requiring it and maybe only in very specific places like, you know, directly downtown. And the point about the corridor to the east of downtown, um, that would also make sense to me. But even then, uh, allow some flexibility, the idea of having horizontal mixed use instead, or having some kind of process to, I don't know exactly what this would look like, but to make an argument for, you know, we'd like to not have ground floor retail that doesn't have to go through a, um, a zoning code amendment, to have some, some kind of reasonable flexibility there. Um, I, I would also note that our existing mixed use sites are actually heavily discouraged. Um, mainly from what I can tell by our parking requirements. You can see this in, uh, the Cressley project or in the recent project on Winchester, that you have this, this very small amount of retail space and behind it, a lot of parking. So you can, you can kind of barely fit commercial space in there. So I think it would, we'd get quite a ways by just not discouraging it. On, uh, on heights, I think Commissioner Kenko's point earlier is well taken. Uh, if we want to have more spacious homes at higher densities, uh, we need to go higher. And also I think we can use the space more efficiently. Um, for example, um, most cities require two staircases on, both, you know, I think any building over four stories. Um, I'm not exactly sure what the building code is there. But for example, uh, Seattle will not only require one, and that lets you make tall buildings that are narrower, that lets you use more of the floor plate, um, and gives you nice designs. It's just a safe, um, and I, that could be something really innovative we could do to, um, go taller and make more room without going over our 75 foot limit, which in retrospect, it really would have made a lot more sense if we had had to vote for it and decide whether we do this every 15 or 20 years. Because I think this, this may be more sticky than we wanted it to be in the eighties, but it is what it is. So yeah, ju- just to emphasize that, uh, I'm, I would like to allow mixed use in a lot more places than we require it.
Thank you. Um, on, on mixed use, um, I, I, I'm really in favor of mixed use. Um, but, uh, picking up on point of Director, uh, Director Eastwood's point about some observations in, in San Jose, where you have mixed use developments which are open. I think they come down to poor quality and where they've got token mixed use. Um, because I, I understand why those places are empty. Somebody just put in there because they've been told to or it had to. I think I'm standard quality. Now, if, if you look at the Fry's, um, location, that would be a big, you know, big development. I think that'd be a great opportunity for, you know, a nice community with shops and some restaurants. Now partly to, you know, save the traffic, um, and partly to develop a sense of community there. You know, you know, maybe picking up on Adam's point, you know, at the same time, the numbers have to work, right, for the developers. Um, so having higher density, um, to make the numbers work, but in return, not just, um, you know, helping the developers' bottom line, but the investment in the community and having a quality development. I don't envy Stephen's task in trying to, uh, trying to define, uh, uh, what a, a mixed use residency, a mixed use application is. But something which is quality where, wh- wh- when it works, it works really well, right? Um, you know, people want to go to those areas. They attract people. Um, so I'd be against, you know, the token side. I think is a really good opportunity, both from the, you know, financial side for the city in, with sales tax. Um, you know, i- it's trying to find quality developments. And if that means being additionally flexible with the developers to make the numbers work, I'd be in, I'd be in favor of that. So there's my, my thoughts on it. Um. How does that stack us with all the things we need to, to, um, touch upon tonight, Director?
I think we can live with that. Um, yeah, it's, it's an initial discussion. There's no hard decisions tonight. We're trying to, it's an interesting topic and there's a lot of different thoughts. I, I have some kind of general consensus points from you, which we'll pull under the council. And, um, again, they, it's mostly working towards principles. And if we, between the commission and council, we start to per circle generally around those principles. Staff would go with that. And generally, we're tending to come back, uh, probably in the March, April timeframe and see how this translates actually into the land use designations. But that's a, this is a good starting point for the discussion.
Thank you. And just picking up from the principles, sorry, I should have mentioned that. I think principles are, are great. You, you listed there. Um, and the one I had, which you, which wasn't in the packet, but you added it on the PowerPoint, was where there was a lack of services. And I'm thinking in the San Thomas area, if there's just small locations, it'd be great, that'd be a corner store. I did, I did that. Okay, Commissioners, any, any other comments if, if staff are happy?
Did we need to give any feedback on the height limit or that's more for council to provide feedback on?
If you have thoughts, it was more, more of a disclosure, council had concerns and we provided, I think, staff's, staff's mind more evidence that it would be less.
Yeah, I saw Planet Rose's comment that for the most part, it's not a m- major deal breaker. We're not going to get, uh, multiple buildings over 70, you know, occasionally or elevator core. But I think the code allows for some of that ornament or infrastructure to exceed that number anyway. So even with a retail floor, I think it made sense to me.
Yeah, I, I just add that to the extent that council, uh, reduced densities because they were worried about uh, heights being too high because they figured 75 units an acre meant more than 75 feet. Um, I would just encourage any of those changes to be reversed.
Well, the only I had is we, we still have a discussion on some tools we'll bring. There's overlay zones, a lot of cities list, if you're going for density bonus, here's a suite of things that we encourage you to, to, to ask concessions on. Here's a suite of things that the city is less encouraged on. And we could list, you know, you could list in that, um, that height would be one that would be more of a concern for Campbell. Our developers, they just want to know upfront, you know, what's the easiest path to get through. So there, there are some tools we can talk about later that would further discourage, um, a break of the height limit. If, if that continues to be a concern.
Yeah, and I, I would just add that, uh, I, I got the sense that, that council was very, very concerned about this. But at the same time, um, I believe you have to have a pretty high, a, a below market rate percentage to get these concessions, uh, especially the, the height concession. And we've been worried that we're not going to get enough below market rate housing. So at least it would solve that problem. Like, I, I think our worry is that we won't have enough developers wanting to do this as opposed to too many.
Please, Commissioner. Just going to say what Commissioner Bookbender was saying. And I don't know, except I only got the height limit voter, voter approved. But, um, you know, a good city bonus, then can you go higher? If you do a higher, maybe you do 20, 25% BMR, we give you another story or something like that. I think those are the kind of, uh, things that can happen. And I, I think that might be a, you know, a carrot, carrot for more, more of the BMR. I wouldn't, I wouldn't purport it. And I, I think like Commissioner Bookbender, obviously he did too. I, I, I did watch the, um, city council discussion and another really, really cautious as they would, as you would expect. Because we all are on the, on the height limit, because we want to be careful. Um, I, I don't want to get off track and I don't know if it's, it's going. I happen to live in right near West San Jose, so we're, we're looking at, uh, so looking at 12 story, uh, apartment building right there at El Paseo across the street, 11, 10 stories. Uh, Saratoga is, uh, just approved with their process that they're doing, the city of Saratoga. They're going 10 stories on that Prospect Lawrence, uh, property. So, uh, you know, this, yeah, yeah, we are, we are going to, we are going to develop a little bit sometimes. So just point that out. Thank you.
Please, please, Commissioner.
I have another comment that, uh, I, I think on, um, I think it's on, it's on, um, page 12 of the agenda. Uh, just below, just a couple paragraphs below the table on hu- hu- housing opportunity site summary. You, you know, th- there's this constant thing about, you know, we put this buffer in and we're talking about having a 5,000, 5,500 unit target, right? So, so there's always this misunderstanding with residents that they think we're going to be building 5,000 units, okay? Because they don't understand the whole buffer thing, right? And so I still hear it. I, I hear it in, um, the town halls and I, I see it on, on, on postings. And here you have a paragraph that states, in summary, staff is recommending that the city move forward with a list of 90, uh, tier one sites, uh, and these represent the best sites for housing. And it says at the end, and will result in a housing production of approximately 4,800 housing units. Which is substantially above 30% buffer of 3,300 units. Alpha, a person reads that, I read it, and says, well, we're going to build 4,800 units. We're not going to build 4,800 units, okay? We have a buffer, as we all know here, to make the 3,000 units, at least try to make the 3,000 units. And so I would like the staff to be more careful about how they state this whole issue about our target units and what the buffer is and why the buffer is there, so that we, we don't continue to have, uh, uh, community members fear that we're, we're overbuilding Campbell. I mean, 3,000 units is a lot of units in the first place. But when, when we're throwing out 5,500, because that's the buffer, because we need to get there if we make the 29%. We need to make sure that we're clear, you know, our communications on that. And so I, I was just bringing out this point that in this sentence, when I read it, it's like, well, sounds like you're saying we're going to build 4,800 units. And we're not. So just, just a point to take. And that's all I got to say.
I'm okay. I'll just, I'll say point taken. Communication's critically important. I, I will say this, um, when we rezone sites and designate them, we intend them for housing development. So I, I'll say sincerely, I hope Campbell's very successful. We need a lot more housing. And if we zone for 4,800 units, that will allow for 4,800 units. Uh, you're absolutely correct. The track record in the past has been 25 to 30%. Um, so I, I, no, no one can tell you today, fortune telling, how many actually units will be built. But I, I wouldn't want to say the other thing that we would zone for 4,800 units and then tell folks, well, by the way, we're actually, you can't build that. So I, I know it's a very nuanced conversation and, and a lot of the staff's, uh, consideration is, is zone higher because in reality, the development will come in less. Uh, but at the same end, I wouldn't want us to be on the other side of that and give people false pretenses that when you plan for that amount of housing, um, you would never anticipate it would not happen, if that makes sense.
Thank you. If that's it, well.
Well, congratulations. So, um, you're already 30 in Oak, uh, Chair Ching, you had some time considerations. But I'll just go ahead and summarize, this is a critical milestone. From here, we go to the council on Tuesday. It's a quick turn. We're going to take the summary from the commission meeting and put it in a, um, desk item and provide it to the council. Uh, it's our way shift there. The council gives it to me, a blessing. All of this will go into the E I R. Uh, we're going to try and give commission and council a little break. I know you've been hearing from us on a very fast clip. But we do plan coming back probably early February, March. Um, the prior some cleanups that still need to be done on the land use map and the mixed use and a few things. And then we'll probably turn our attention at that point to some policy issues. So there's a lot to talk about still on, uh, maybe we're looking at our inclusionary housing requirements, linkage fees. We're really excited about the potential housing overlay zone. But all of those policies ideas will start to come to you in the March, April timeframe. Uh, but again, congratulations on getting through the housing opportunity sites. Uh, it's my sense Campbell's, I'm probably working on the fastest clip in the entire valley here. Um, uh, but again, a lot of that is due to, to engaged, uh, commission and council that's given really good direction on this. So from staff's pers- perspective, uh, thank you very much.
No, thank you very much. And a reflection of, uh, I think the whole team's effort, if we call it that way. And, um, it's been a great structure. I think it's really helped because there's been so much to digest. We could have gotten some, uh, deep sticky water over this. So I really appreciate the way it's been laid out and structured on that. Thank Commissioners for all the efforts tonight. So if it's okay, I'll close the meeting. Thank you. Thank commissioners for all their efforts tonight. So if it's okay, I'll close the meeting. Thank you.
Hi, Cristinella. How's it going? Good. I wasn't sure we were recapping or not.
Actually, I think it's still live streaming.
Good night.